Okay, this is the City Council regular meeting, and it is 6:33 PM on October 20th, 2020. And called to order, Mike, will you do the role?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
And Councilmember Kent Rehn.
Welcome, Council. Meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, city website www.samamish.us/tv21. Please look on the website. Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. And to view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting, again on the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21 on YouTube and the Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. The pledge this evening, Pam, why don't you lead us in the pledge?
Okay. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Stewart. Approval of the agenda, I'm looking for a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second on the floor. I do have something I wanted to move around this evening. I wanted to move, let's see, number 16, which is the discussion on House Bill 1590. We have got Kathy Lambert with us this evening, and so I wanted to see if we could move that up and put that up closer to the top so she wouldn't have to stay with us the entire evening. Okay, so we're gonna, you don't know how long that could be. So if we could move that up to right after the public hearing, so move it up to number 12.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all, any, any other motions or amendments? Great, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Excellent, thank you. And next we are up for emergency management. Andrew, you want to give us our update?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, my name is Andrew Stevens, I'm the emergency manager with Eastside Fire and Rescue. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city manager. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update on the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. States across the US are seeing numbers equal to or greater than earlier spikes in this pandemic. Early, seven-day average is now more than 58,000 new cases a day in the US, and just last week, 17 states posted new daily records for infections. State of Washington is now nearing 100,000 confirmed cases of COVID-19, with King County counting as roughly one-quarter of all statewide cases. Samamish is now registering as 311 cases, and that is a five increase since yesterday. Not five times, five new cases. Of the key indicators of COVID-19 activity defined by the Washington State Public Health, King County is failing to meet five out of those eight metrics. Most notably, King County is currently registering a 14-day average of 92 new cases per 100,000 residents, where the target is less than 25. As I mentioned during my last report, there's really been no major difference other than individual behavior that appears to be the root cause of these massive nationwide number increases. Colder weather is driving people indoors, they're gathering in larger groups, returning to schools and places of business, social gatherings, or they're just simply growing fatigued from the fight of COVID-19 and no longer complying with the health, public health mitigations. So I urge everyone to please continue making the best possible choices on how they mitigate this continued and ongoing threat. At the last council meeting, City of, Samamish City Council, there were ongoing reports of the city spending money in regards to COVID-19 response and recovery. So as promised, here is a summary of those expenses to date. These are going to be averaged to, basically rounded to the nearest thousand. $207,000 to ensure continuity of government, primarily related to IT-related telework expenses for staff and personnel. Roughly $12,000 in personnel overtime and for backfill and sick leave for COVID expenses. $94,000 in emergency protective measures, which include personal protective equipment, enhanced sanitation and hygiene, signage, external communications, and more. And of that $94,000, we will be seeking FEMA emergency public reimbursement of roughly $70,000. Another $420,000 in small business grants, which includes $8,000 in pass-through CARES Act dollars from King County, and $315,000 in nonprofit human services grants assisting those affected by COVID-19. In all, the city has spent roughly $950,000 in COVID-19 response and recovery, not including the pass-through CARES funds from King County. As these numbers change, council will continue to be informed at each regularly scheduled city council meeting. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Well, we do have a couple of questions this evening. First up, we have got Councilmember Gamblin, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew, for that report. Could you speak to mortality? It seems like we're getting the more cases. How are we looking on, in King County and in Washington and Samamish, on the new cases, the mortality?
You are seeing a decrease in mortality from early on, I think because a lot of the younger populations are driving some of the increased cases. In Samamish, we're still standing at seven confirmed fatalities. However, if you remember, that was recently changed, it was basically in August, late August, September, that we had nearly doubled our fatality count here in the city. Hospitalizations are roughly the same. There is no real change in medical treatment, there's no miracle cure yet. They're still obviously working on vaccines, but that is weeks out, months out possibly from even testing. So we're really, you know, I think a lot of the most vulnerable populations are doing their best to ensure that they're protecting themselves, while there's, I think, a different demographic who feels almost invincible, they're going out, getting infected, as you saw in, I guess, University of Washington, College Row, where there's, you know, gatherings, parties, and it's creating basically these micro surges. But these folks can go back and they basically are then super-spreaders to more vulnerable populations, it really does increase the risk for those who can definitely be more affected.
Thank you, Andrew.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I was hoping that we could get, thanks for the report, but I was hoping we could get a written report of the spending. It's hard to take the notes when you just share it with us, so is that something we can get as a follow-up in writing once a month on that spending?
Absolutely, and this report that I've given out at every council meeting in the past seven months is also, we publish these reports to the public, usually the day of or the day after each meeting.
Yeah, again, I definitely just want to be able to get the details on the spending, so that'd be great. And I did have another question, just, you know, as we're talking about things starting to have some spikes again in terms of COVID, and I know Councilmember Gamblin and our city manager, Mr. Rudat, have had colds recently. Shouldn't folks at City Hall be wearing masks? Isn't that part of the mask mandate?
Yeah, they, we do.
Okay, I'm just seeing folks at City Hall right now not wearing masks, and I just feel like we should be setting a good example, and if we're in a space together, we should all be wearing masks, so.
Just, I'll comment. Council is, we do wear masks at City Hall.
Yeah, and we are, every other seat up here, and we take them off, and we're going to be using the microphone, because it's very hard to speak through the masks and have it be something that you can actually understand. But I am looking at everybody on that counter, and they're all wearing masks.
Yep.
But we wear masks to protect others, not to protect ourselves, so I just, I worry about our staff, who have to be out and doing things, that we should be making sure we're taking extra care of them.
Okay, actually, the staff that is here tonight, they are all wearing masks. Okay, so any other comments this evening on this? Okay, thank you, Andrew, great report. Next up, we have public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted 5:00, up to 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and thecitycouncil@samamish.us. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. Phone number 1-571-317-3122. The access code 929-348-197. Once you have joined the meeting, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. If you would like to provide public comment on the public, publicly hearing, please say so when you are unmuted. Woo! You will be placed back on mute, and you will have the opportunity to speak under the public hearing. Thank you. How many people do we have tonight on, on calls?
We have five callers this evening.
Five, great. Okay, Mr. Sugg.
Thank you. I will restate some of the mayor's instructions here. I will unmute callers in the order in which they join the meeting. When it is your turn, you will hear an automated voice say "unmuted," and you'll have three minutes to provide comment. If you have called in to provide comment on the public hearing, please say so when unmuted, and I will place you back on hold and return to you when the council reaches the public hearing. Again, please state your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record, and I will now go ahead and unmute our first caller. Caller number one, are you commenting on public comment or for the public hearing?
Public comment.
All right, you have three minutes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Romero Valderrama from Samamish. Budgets and legislative priorities are the reflection of a city's priorities for its citizens. Looking at this agenda, clearly council doesn't have any priorities that make sense. Council has been unable to repeatedly respond to public questions to show past investments in infrastructure. Council is now planning to spend $34 million less on capital projects this cycle than last. Clearly, despite the rhetoric over the last few years, building infrastructure to alleviate traffic has never been a real priority. As for fiscal responsibility, the council is now planning to take the maximum bank taxes of 11% increase in one swoop, yet the records show it retains a net $22 million ending funding balance. Why would the council, who espouses fiscal conservation, not just draw down on the $22 million and implement the much-talented reforms we hear about but don't get to see? One also has to ask, why are they allowing the police budget to grow so quickly and to $8.9 million, especially when the justification for those four was the town center, which is yet to be built? Instead, we see millions going to stopping growth in attorneys that went from .8 to $2 million in 2021, and you see the millions for Fair Peers, for TSI, for Daniel Evans, Work Consulting, Enrix, et cetera. Council will now also ask the state in the legislative priority for millions in assistance for Sahale and for Issiswau Falls City Road. Ironically, last week, the city manager told you, quote, "We do not have a six-year tip or a six-years CIP this year." So the council has been told explicitly, especially June 18th, 2019, to be eligible for state and federal funding, a transportation implementation plan had to be in place, or you would lose billions of dollars. And specifically, Sahale had to be on the plan. Yet in May, after an erratic feigning that you had been fooled and wanted Sahale off the list, then the council rejected approving any tip, so there is no tip, no money for Sahale, yet you're asking for that. Yet even more erratic has been the council saying that they wanted in the past capacity for Sahale and are now just asking for safety, no last lane. And if you then look at the slide, to be even more dysfunctional, council is trying to keep an invalidated past concurrency measure that underestimates capacity on Sahale by 48% and violated State Growth Management Act and SEPA. Council continues to impede the development of the town center, yet goes back and says ironically now that they want to ask for transit. There's no mention that King County Executive Dow Constantine has publicly committed to providing the city transit to the town center when built. It does not show. Through its actions, it's clear that this do-nothing council is not interested in improving our infrastructure. Instead, it's actively trying to impede the development of the town center and spending millions of dollars for attorneys and stopping growth. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your thoughts.
All right, moving on to our second caller. Caller number two, have you called for public comment or for public hearing?
Public comment.
All right, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Moran and City Council members. My name is Jerry Gordon, and I am here on behalf of the League of Women Voters, Seattle King County Environmental Committee. King County has recently developed a strategic climate action plan and toolkit to reach significant climate goals. If we all work together on this plan, it can help us mitigate the crisis we're in and allow us to be sustainable. The League has been working with King County and their new Strategic Climate Action Plan, also known as SCAP, and toolkit, find volunteers in the 39 different cities of King County. The purpose of this is to support the city in which we live to realize our new climate goals. In Samamish, I am your volunteer as your League team member. It is our intention as League volunteers to assist the city in reaching the climate goals that you deem important by utilizing the League's values of democracy, equity, and a systems approach of cross-sharing with the other county district teams that have been developed. It is my hope that someone on the council will contact you to begin a relationship so that we can be better further yours as well as our community's climate needs. Thank you for allowing my input, and I will be following up with more information in the near future. Thank you again. Good night.
Thank you. I'll be in touch with you probably sometime this week.
All righty, moving on to our third caller. Caller number three, are you calling for public comment or for the public hearing?
Public comment.
All righty, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon to the council. My name is Sexley Glaire, and I am a 13-year-old living in Samamish. I was informed that a deer was run over by someone's car near Metro Garden Market on Fourth Street. It was such a traumatic experience for everyone who was involved, and worse, a beautiful life was lost. As more natural habitats like forests and its buildings and roadways, we have to make it a top priority that Samamish wildlife is safe and protected. I reached out to you in August, and you discussed the possibility of digging an underpass on Fourth Street in order to allow wildlife to cross it safely. Since then, have you started funding for this project to happen? Have you made any progress? Have you done anything? Wildlife is forced to cross roads and highways in search of food, water, cover, and meat, placing it in the path of less-leaving vehicles. Digging this underpass will be expensive, but it will be worth it, because ultimately, this project will save lives and give wildlife the opportunity to move around the city as needed. It will be the start of a whole system in which we can live with our wild neighbors without conflict. And they seem hard, but it is possible. I urge you to invest time and effort into this, because if we work together, we can learn how to peacefully coexist with wild animals and support their natural habitat. Not yet here right yet. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
Moving on to our fourth caller. Caller number four, have you called for public comment or for the public hearing?
Public comment.
All right, please go ahead.
This is Mary Woodder, honorable city council members. I've lived in the city of Samamish for 20 years, and my comment tonight is on your item 15 on page 248 for state legislative priorities. I am asking that you please ensure the Lewis Thompson Road tight line is included in your short list of priority projects for the city as you pursue 2021 state legislature considerations for funding. In my research since 2014, I have learned that in Washington State, salmon recovery, fish culverts, and water quality typically do have funding, and they're excellent items to pursue. Funding and grants in recent years have been quite successful for Samamish, and our city is unique, as two-thirds of our flows go westward toward Lake Samamish, and we have four salmon streams with 1.5 miles. And while unprecedented COVID times may mean less money, time, and opportunity for inputs or discussion, fish, salmon recovery, and water quality do align well with the watershed health, wildlife, and for Raya 8 seater Lake Samamish and Samamish watersheds. Please ask now for 2021, as it is important for this stormwater project on Lewis Thompson, which directly impacts Zakuus Creek and the chances of Kocane recovery and success. There are excessive flows that have speed, volume, and durations, directly causing erosion and carrying sediment to this key salmon stream and habitat. Life cycle for Kocane salmon starts as eggs hatch in the streams, they swim to live deep in Lake Samamish, and return to the stream to spawn typically at three years. The National Putin Discharge System, Western Washington Phase II Stormwater Municipal Permit, does require that you do basin planning. The city did adopt Zakuus Basin Plan, which identifies this Lewis Thompson Road project and prioritized it as number one already. In the future, NPDES will make stronger requirements for what has to be done, and when those changes occur, everyone will have to comply, and there will not be money then. So my ask tonight at this meeting, which I know is important and long, is that you discuss and agree to keep and put legislative priority on stormwater number one with the Lewis Thompson Road tight line, as it is described on page 248 of the packet. Additionally, this number-one stormwater project can even aid reduction of fecal coliform, because there are old seppics in Tamarack and the Zakuus Basin area, and fecal coliform has been in rising in all of our lakes, including Lake Samamish, which has a category 5, 303D list. So this project, which I'm asking for, for legislative priority for the state, helps salmon recovery, traffic safety, reduces pollutants into Zakuus Creek and into Lake Samamish, and it can have water quality aspects. Thank you for consideration and for this opportunity to give input tonight.
Thank you, Mary.
All righty, moving on to our last caller. Caller number five, are you calling for the public comment or for public hearing?
That's our public comment.
All right, please go ahead.
I have a call in. I called in last week just to make a small comment, which I'm following up on today, and this has a lot to do with, basically, the permits that have been granted along the, that was the area that was once a conservancy zone, and which all, all four parcels that were granted, water towers, were granted substantial variances, and the reason this is considered a conservancy or was considered a conservancy zone is because all of the parcels contain the majority of these environmental hazards that all are along a shoreline and statewide significance. They are on the size of hazards, they sit within the FEMA 100-year floodplain, are on the Class III CARA, they are in erosion hazards, back to wetlands and wetland buffers, and contain fish-bearing streams and associated buffers. The parcel that I mentioned last time particularly was parcel number 202-506-9151. When it obtained its variance permit, it was owned by a Mr. Pottle, I can't pronounce his first name, I apologize, who purchased the property from the Barrett Trust and bought on May 27th, 2015, for $330,000. He then sold the parcel after the variances for the environmental protection, because access to the parcel was obtained, to Sean Miller on May 31st, 2019, for $1.95 million, without anything being built on the property. This parcel is particularly concerning to me because of the fact that if this parcel is able to be granted building, then I don't know what parcel would be deemed unbuiltable anymore. And this is a major concern to me, as the property behind my house, which is located here on Eastside Samamish, on, I live off of 32nd Place Northeast, located down off of Eastside Samamish, not the one on the plateau, because apparently there's two. The reason I'm concerned is that there is a company that has come in and bought a large number of unbuilt and supposedly environmentally constrained properties at a low cost, similar to this, in hopes that they will be able to build on those properties. I bought every one of the parcels that are located basically to the town to me, that were at one time the last of the unbuilt shoreline in the conservancy zone. Every one of them, as I mentioned, were granted the ability to build, one containing a stream called, what was labeled 0143F on the trail report, and has been noted as having, being a fish-bearing stream, so much so that the taxpayers did have to pay to have a, actually, a fish-bearing culvert added prior to going underneath the trail. Now, it was just, within the last month, a building permit, where it says they're going to have a box culvert, and I don't understand why the city or anyone would approve something less than what the taxpayers had to pay in order to protect that same fish-bearing stream, and make sure that it remains as one of the few that actually does not have the inhibition from reaching its source over 500 feet above to where it reached, before it reaches the shoreline, when the proper designated as having, as erosion zone. The stream runs right through the middle, less than 100, roughly 104-foot parcel.
I'm going to have to have you finish your...
...of the stream buffers. Sorry.
Your lines up, so I'm going to have to have you finish?
From 155 to 37 feet. Okay, all right. My point, my main point is that we need to be concerned about overbuilding and allowing these builders are coming in, especially since the zoning has not been altered on all of these environmental parcels, which are still showing as R4 regardless of the environmental constraints that are listed on the land.
That is all for comment tonight, Mayor.
Thank you for all those that called in this evening. Okay, next up, Council, we've got our consent calendar. I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'd like to pull off item number four, the revised phase reopening plan. For review, please.
Okay, we are going to remove number four, and we are going to put it. Okay, why don't we put it down right, oh gosh, why don't we put it right where we just moved number 16? Why don't we put it right there, right behind it? Any other changes to the consent calendar? Okay. So no other changes, so the consent calendar, we have a first and a second. So consent calendar as presented minus number 14. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, next we have proclamation, and Councilmember Trine, would you please read the proclamation this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Moran. Sammamish, Washington proclamation. This is the mayor's day of concern, which will be October 30th and 31st, 2020. Whereas East King County cities Bellevue, Issaquah, Kirkland, Redmond, and Sammamish recognize adequate nutrition as a basic goal for each community member, and whereas food insecurity occurs when individuals or households lack reliable access to a significant quantity of affordable nutritious food, whereas no parent should have to see their child hungry, no baby should be without the comfort of the feedings needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods, and whereas with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic and the implementations of strategies to slow the spread of COVID-19 in the community that have led to businesses and school closures, food insecurities has increased in King County. Whereas food insecurity has almost doubled during the pandemic, and whereas food needs are now one of the most common reasons for King County residents call seeking assistance with social services this past year. And whereas the Latinx, the Black, and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders populations are disproportionately represented among callers seeking food assistance, and whereas food banks, emergency and hot meal programs, working with our cities, local churches, service, social service agencies, and hundreds of volunteers are striving day in and day out to stem the rising needs. However, still more need help is needed. And whereas we believe that when residents hear of the especially desperate needs in our communities as winter approaches, and the increased rates of unemployment impact people's ability to cover rental costs, leaving even less money for monthly food purchases, an outpouring of community assistance will follow. Whereas the cities of Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, Issaquah, and Sammamish would like to support all members of our community. So now therefore, October 30th and 31st is hereby proclaimed to be the mayor's day of choice for committee members experiencing food insecurities, and strongly urge all citizens to support local food banks, meal programs, Hope Link, Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, and Open Kitchen, and to share what they can to nurse those who are hungry. In witness whereof, I have in return set my hand and sealed the city of Sammamish the 20th day of October 2020, the mayor, Karen Moran. Thank you, Karen Moran.
Thank you. I also wanted to just mention a couple of quick things. I wanted to say a quick thank you tonight to Brian Zinser, our postmaster from Redmond Post Office, and his team for alerting the city that stolen unopened ballots were inappropriately placed in outgoing mail, and they were delivered 90% of the ballots to Sammamish households. Zinser wanted to assure Sammamish residents that those ballots would be redelivered. And I also wanted to thank the residents who called the Sammamish PD to alert the PD that garbage bags found full of mail, including ballots, on the roadside. The PD went around and delivered what they could, and undelivered mail was returned to the postmaster for it to be delivered. Chief Bingree has spoken to several media outlets and confirmed that no evidence that this ballot or mail theft was politically motivated. And I wanted to alert, if you have not received your ballot app this time, please call King County Elections or go to their website and download one. And also, the good note for the day, wanted to bring mention to the fact that Sammamish is 2020's best small city in America according to Wally Hub Study. So anyway, that was saw that today, so that was awesome news. Okay, the next thing that we have up is the presentation and discuss and discussion on the King County Charter Amendment Number Five, making the King County Sheriff an appointed position, and Mr. Sugg.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg, Senior Arrangement Analyst, and tonight, as the mayor mentioned, the council will receive presentations in support of and in opposition to King County Charter Amendment Number Five. This charter amendment is on the ballot for the November 3rd general election and asks whether the King County Sheriff should return to being in appointed position. The council has invited Kenan Williams to speak in support of the measure, and Kathy Lambert to speak in opposition to the measure. Both have graciously accepted the council's invitation and are taking the time to speak with us this evening. Both guests will have up to five minutes to present their viewpoint, and then afterwards the council can ask questions and determine whether or not to take a position on this ballot measure. With that said, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, well, we are fortunate this evening, we have Councilmember Lambert here, and do we have, great, okay, so I'll leave that up to you, who would you like to?
With Kenan.
Okay, let's have Kenan go first, and then we'll have Councilmember Lambert go second.
Are you ready?
We are.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your service, as well as Councilmember Lambert. I'm glad, this is very, well, quite an honor actually, because Councilmember Lambert and I have known each other for a number of years, and we actually get a divided position on this one, so I think this is kind of fun. Good evening. My name is Kenan Williams, and I am a commissioner on the King County Charter Review Commission. I'd like to thank you first for inviting me to speak on behalf of this position, proposition. King County Proposition Five is really, in my mind, about good government, which is why it is supported by the League of Women Voters and was overwhelmingly supported by the Charter Review Commission. Those of you that are not familiar with the Charter Review Commission understand that we are all appointed citizen volunteers who every 10 years go and review the charter and determine what needs to be changed and what the different propositions that should be considered. Proposition Five is really simply about respecting representative government and good government. It allows representatives to set the policy and hire the best professionals that it can. Just like the Seahawks are not limited to taking players from either Washington State University, or the UW, or maybe even Central, we're allowed to go out and find the likes of a Russell Wilson, hire the likes of a Pete Carroll from California, do all these things because we want the best people for the job. King County residents should not be artificially limited in selecting a sheriff from a group of very small, very small group of sworn law enforcement officers that are willing and able to mount a political campaign to take on a political position, which is really just a law enforcement position. That's what it's supposed to be, it's an administrative position. Unfortunately, this has become very political, and I think sadly, a lot of the other events of last summer created a bigger political issue out of this than it really should be. Because when we look at it, we really want to say, who should be the best professional for the job? This issue and this proposition was actually forwarded to the county council well before any George Floyd incident, well before everything went crazy with Black Lives Matter. This was all about good government. And it is our position, and it's my position, that a law enforcement officer should not be a politician. You hire them, you decide what policies to have. I mentioned though, unfortunately, this has become a political matter, and the Sheriff's Guild has raised almost $200,000 to try and defeat this measure. Why? They want to control their boss, and it really should be you determining that. Now, I want to ask you this. If someone came to you and said, you as a council no longer have the authority to select your police chief, would you think that would be the right move? The answer would be no. The Sheriff's Department and the Sheriff's Guild, most of the opposition to this, would want you to believe that we're going to be out of pace with the rest of the state. And I say, let's turn that around and take a look at what's really going on here. 89% of the population of King County lives in municipalities. Those municipalities select their own police chief. Allowing the county council the same authority that you have as a city council to select a top cop, as it were, puts the county in line with every city out there. The argument was also made that, gosh, if you take away the right of the voters to decide this, even though the voters are severely limited by selection, then what's going to happen is, quote, "The Seattle liberal mob is going to take over the selection of the sheriff." Seattle is the biggest voting bloc for the sheriff anyway, and yet that isn't their top law enforcement officer. Their top law enforcement officer is selected by their city council. So it comes down to, what do you want to do? Do you want to give the county council the same authority that you have, or do we want to be artificially limited in our selection process? Now, this all reminds me of a number of years ago, the city of Yakima was facing some really horrible gang violence. They had some problems there with drug trafficking, human trafficking, all sorts of other things. They knew that they didn't have the expertise there in order to address the problem. If I might have a second. What they did was they went and hired someone from Los Angeles with experience in dealing with gang matters to get things under control. We don't have that opportunity here. All I am saying is, good government allows this, you have that authority, why is it so threatening to give the county council that authority? I do trust the judgment of Kathy Lambert, I do think she would do a good job, and I think she would do a much better job of selecting a sheriff based on criteria that she looked at, she vetted, and she determined for the people that she represents, as well as do the rest of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to hear from Kathy Lambert.
Okay, and it's going to come down, or is it just talking to it? Okay, thank you very much, Kenyan, it's great to hear from you, and yes, we would have a lot of fun if we were on the council together, because we usually do agree, but today we can have some fun, because we don't agree on this topic. And I will tell you, I have served under five different sheriffs. I have served with an elected sheriff, and I've served an appointed sheriff. And so this was a difficult decision for me to decide exactly what I thought was the best, because both have their pros and their cons. But I came down on the side of it being a no on Charter Amendment Five for three reasons: consistency, collective bargaining, and citizens' voice. First of all, consistency. When you have a sheriff or any elected official, people like to know who their elected official is. They like to know that they can call you up, and that they see you at the grocery store, they recognize you, and they can talk to you, which is why my food usually melts, about whatever the issue is. Under this plan, every time there's a new King County executive, they could appoint a new sheriff, and I think that that's not good for the people. The second thing is collective bargaining. The way it's set up right now, the sheriff negotiates on working conditions, and the executive negotiates on the budget issues. And I think it's more important to have the sheriff negotiating working conditions, because the sheriff is the person who knows, hears from the officers what's working, what's not working, and is able to negotiate. The working conditions will be the best for the citizens and the officers in our county. Under this, the the executive would do the bargaining for everything. Third point is citizens' voice. Knowing your sheriff is really important. This is a very large county, we have just heard that we are the 12th largest county in the United States, bigger than some 13 states, actually. And knowing this county is really important. I sort of say it's like every city's their own child in your family. You love them all, and they are very different. And so to have somebody come from back east or wherever, to be the sheriff would take them years to know all 39 of the cities intimately. Our last two sheriffs, John Urquhart, who is also a very good sheriff, he had worked in the sheriff's department for over 20 years, and he knew this county backwards and forwards. Mitzi Johanknet, our current sheriff, she also is a long-term sheriff employee. She has served in almost every single one of the specialty units in the sheriff's office. So when she says to a unit, this is what I want you to do, she knows not only the dynamics of that position, but she also knows the dynamics of the community that's being served. When we first had some issues, the Contract Cities together wrote a very impressive letter thanking the sheriff's department for the good work they have done and how they appreciate being Contract Cities. So I think that the system that we have now is working well. The issue about who you can recruit, it isn't just a person who's inside of our sheriff's department, it could be any person, including somebody from a different police department, but it could be any person that lives in this county. If I were to choose to run for sheriff, which I won't, but if I were, I could run for that office, as long as in the following year I pass the academy. So you can recruit any of the 2.2 million citizens who would qualify as being able to vote, as well as felt that they could pass the academy within the first year. So we do have lots of people to choose from, and I suggest that that it is more political to have a person being changed every four, eight years in this position than it is to hire somebody that the people have voted on, that people know, that people have a relationship, and if the sheriff believes that they intend to stay in the position for a while, they're going to make a really good effort to know their communities. And I think that's a really important part of knowing your sheriff and talking to them about what your needs are and as they change. And so I think that the system we have now, starting in 1852 up until now, only 25 years of that time have we had an appointed sheriff, and we have had excellent elected sheriffs, and I hope that in the future we will continue to have excellent sheriffs that have been elected. So I'm asking people to vote no on Charter Amendment Number Five.
Okay, well, I know we're going to have questions from council.
That's good.
So, and because we're one of those cities that we don't have our own sheriff that we get to vote for, so we have, we have, well, we don't have our own department, so we are in the position where, yeah, so our sheriff is the King County Sheriff, so. Okay, so questions coming in from council. Let's see, maybe we don't. Counsel, do we have any questions?
Mayor, I have a question, this is Jason.
Oh, okay. So we've got.
It's a process.
And who's the?
Thank you.
Who's the question for, just?
For both, it's kind of just more of a process rather than the substance of the issue. I've been trying to figure out if other municipalities are weighing in as far as, you know, and other members in other cities in council in the Lambert's district, are they participating by putting in some sort of up or down, or in favor, or against, or are they commenting on this as far as the councils are concerned? And we have a council, as a city of Sammamish, have we done these things before? And we have a council, as a city, which, have we done these things before? And under what circumstances, if we have, have we participated on speaking out on county council, you know, actions like this? If I may, this is.
Okay, so first off, there's a bad echo. Okay. So is everybody at City Hall, is everybody muted? Everybody muted their stuff because people are getting a really bad echo? Oh, yeah. Kristi, does that help? Okay, we'll see if that helps any. Okay, so I think we had where, Kenyon, I think you were going to answer first?
Yes. This is, again, Kenyon Williams. So, give you a little bit of my background. In addition to my eminent domain practice, I also represent a number of municipalities. And so there is a process, a legal process, that allows for you to take a collective position as a city on ballot measures, so long as you are provided, provide both the proponents and opponents of a measure equal time to state their position, and you can take a collective position as a city. With reference to whether or not other cities have taken a position on this, I'm unaware of that. I believe that the city of Woodinville might have been approached with that. I was not asked to attend or speak on that matter. A number of organizations, like the League of Women Voters, did weigh in, and they are in favor of this measure, as well as we received an endorsement from The Stranger and the ACLU. But those are not cities, those are organizations. And maybe Kathy Lambert can weigh in on whether or not other cities have.
So thank you, Jason. Being that you are a Contract City, you have a huge vested interest in who the sheriff is, and having a good working relationship with the sheriff. Many of the Contract Cities, and I believe Carnation also did sign the Contract Cities letter, that said that they are very pleased with the system as it is now. So we have had very good relationships with all of our Contract Cities. And as you know, you are co-sharing our precinct, we're co-sharing your building with you, which we definitely appreciate. And so we have a very collaborative relationship between the counties, the county and the cities that are Contract Cities. And I'm not sure which cities have taken a, have taken and done the resolution already, but I know several are considering them. And because they are Contract Cities, I believe that they are probably going to want things to continue, but I have not heard that specifically yet.
Thank you, Kathy. Just, I guess more from a historical perspective, from Sumamish, do we have, I'm still getting that echo, by the way. Just curious as to if we've done this kind of thing before, or if anybody has any memory about doing something like this before, either recently, and it slipped my mind, or in the, you know, further in our, in our history, have we ever, you know, spoken out or taken a position on, a position like this, or an issue like this, that, yes, directly affects us as a city, or is before voters right now?
And I'm going to have Deputy Mayor, because she seemed to have some information on that. So Deputy Mayor, did you want to answer that?
Yeah, we have, previously, we have taken a position on a ballot measure. And the last one that I can recall, Jason, was the school districts bond levy. I think that's been some time ago, it was before you were on the council. But again, we had the pro and con statement, and then, and actually, I think we may have taken one with Lake Washington as well, so.
Appreciate that. I will close by saying, I'm grateful for the opportunity to have our two, our pro and con folks come in. I will stop any other comment by just simply saying, it's my recommendation that we take this into consideration, and that we allow the public to respond to us based upon what they heard tonight, and then take it up for either an up or down vote, or action, whatever that may be, next week at our next council meeting, which will still be in the voting period, because I do think the public deserves the right to receive this information and then, you know, approach the council with their statements and give everybody a chance to speak out.
Okay, we do have a few in the box here. Now, hang on, let me go back through here. Okay, Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, thank you both for that input. Just so I'm clear, does the Sumamish Council have any input here on the effects or the impacts of this, or is this simply an advisory statement if we choose to make a statement to voters? And either one can answer that.
This is Kenyon Williams again, and I guess I'm trying to understand what you mean by
Well, we're not really having any, we don't have any decision-making capacities, I should say here, correct?
Well, no. You have the ability to make a collective endorsement of a position, either by saying yes, or by saying no. And one of the other things that I just wanted to point out, as Councilmember Lambert pointed out, yes, this is important to you, but again, regardless of who the sheriff ultimately becomes, whether it's appointed or elected, you still have, as a Contract City, the right to say, "We want to have our own police department, we're going to go away, we're going to leave you alone," like the 75% of other people living in King County. Or you can say, "We don't like your, the person that you've sent out here, sheriff, we want to have someone different." And then the question really becomes is, because you do have so much say, right now, the city of Seattle, with their huge voting bloc, and the city of Seattle, Renton, Bellevue, all those cities that don't, aren't really impacted as much by the sheriff, at least you have the ability to go to Councilmember Lambert and say, "Kathy, you know, we want a sheriff that's going to do X, Y, and Z." You lose that when you basically hand this over to the voters of Bellevue, Seattle, and
My response to that would be that by your taking a collective stand, it shows your relationship with the Sheriff's Department, and that you are happy with the contract. And so people know that things are working well. And also, there are about three members of the King County Council, out of the nine, who actually represent Contract Cities. The rest have their own police departments. The sheriff does do some services countywide, and is the head law enforcement person for the county, but most of the services are done in the unincorporated, or 57%. At one of the last reports, I think it's actually higher now, but it was 57% of the sheriff's budget is in the Contract Cities. So I think it's important for the public to know that things are working well, and that gives them reassurance that the system works, especially in these days right now. And I forgot to tell you one thing that I meant to say earlier. I vacillated on what was best on this until I watched Chief Carmen Best give the speech, and I'm sure we all remember, where she pretty much looks like she'd been shot, not shot, socked in the stomach, where she said, "I am so sorry, I did not make the decision to give up the East Precinct." And I looked at that, and I thought, I never, ever want to see a law enforcement officer have to make a decision that was political, when they knew that was not in the best interests of the safety of the people of their jurisdiction. And that's how I made my final decision.
Okay, thank you both.
Okay, next up, I have Councilmember Stewart, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so since I've been on the council, bad echo again. I think it's folks in City Hall. There we go. So since I've been on the council, the council has, at least when I first joined, the council said, "We do not think it is appropriate for us to take a stand on these measures," because we had additional bond measures that came up after I joined the council, and the council said, "No, if it's something that's out to the vote of the people, that the council shouldn't weigh in, and we should leave it up to the vote of the people." So I think that we have done a great service tonight by bringing in speakers to speak to the measure before and against it, so people have more information than just what's in their voter pamphlet. But I don't think we should be weighing in one way or the other, because it has been put out to a vote of the people for them to make that decision. So that's just my two cents on it. If we are going to take a vote, I certainly have my personal opinions, but I'm not sure that we should be allowing our personal opinions to sway people. But if we're going to take a vote, I'll share those then.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I wanted to add one more, and we have taken a position on that, and that is on transit three, when that was on the ballot, our council took a position on that. And I see the circumstances as being similar here. I would certainly look to the council to say whether or not we collectively take a position, but if we're going to take a position, I would be in opposition of what Councilmember Ritchie said, I think it's important to do it tonight. Ballots have already been out, we probably should have discussed this a week ago, frankly, before ballots dropped, because, you know, we have lost an opportunity to have this discussion for the benefit of our residents in advance of them potentially already filling their ballots out. But, you know, when things are going to impact our city potentially, then I think there is reason enough for the council to help assist in what our collective position is. Certainly, our residents are always free to express themselves on their ballot if they see differently from us, and that's fine. We're not all going to think alike on this topic. But, you know, both speakers have brought up some valid points. However, from, you know, my position and what I believe for our residents, as far as police services go, you know, we don't really get a say right now who our police chief is, anyway. I mean, we have some influence in that department, but it's certainly not the like of electing our own sheriff. We get a pool that is selected for us by the sheriff's office. And I think Councilmember Lambert brought up a really good point with consistency. There is value in consistency. And I think my real concern here, and maybe our speakers here can address this concern I have, which is, you know, I think when we're talking about police work, it is best done by someone who knows the ins and outs of it. And as we've heard, anyone could potentially be appointed to this, they would have to go through the academy within the next year, but, you know, we have historically had sheriffs for KCSO that know the ins and outs of the work. And I think it's important to lean on a professional. And the other point that I think is relevant here is that, you know, three of the nine council members are representing unincorporated King County or cities that contract services with KCSO, as we do. And so I see this being important for our residents. And, you know, if the council is willing, I'm certainly willing to take a position on this to help inform our residents if they have not already made up their minds, or are looking for guidance from their city council on how their city can best be served by a
Councilmember Lambert, would you like to go first this time?
I think she was brilliant.
Okay. I guess I would like to say, talk about consistency, and let's talk about history as to how it works. First of all, during the period of time when the charter was first enacted, we went to an appointed sheriff. And the reason why we went to an appointed sheriff, a little bit of history, is because of corruption and other problems from there. During that period of, following that period of time, we had two sheriffs. The most long-lasting one was James Montgomery, who then left after it became an elected position to say, "I don't want to be a politician," and he became the chief of Bellevue, where he stayed for a number of years. Since that time, we have had six sheriffs, or five sheriffs. We had first Dave Reichert, who was appointed, by the way. Dave Reichert was initially appointed by then Executive Ron Sims. He then ran unopposed for a partial term because he quit to go run for Congress. His handpicked successor, Sue Rohr, then stayed on, was, you know, reappointed by the council. And then, when she ran, she also ran unopposed until she decided to leave to do something else. Her handpicked successor, Steve Strahan, was previously the chief of Kent, and then he served as second-in-command under Sue Rohr. He was defeated by John Urquhart, who served, was elected for one term, and then was thrown out in a sex scandal. I think you all remember about all the sexual harassment things that go on. So we don't know how consistent this sheriff is. We don't know how particularly qualified this person is, because we generally had one choice. We've only had two elected, or two contested ballots in the entire 20-something years that this has been an elected position. Otherwise, it has been simply an appointed position where they ran unopposed. So, going to the council member's point, if you want consistency, consistency is generally taken up when you hire a qualified professional that has all sorts of things. Not everyone wants to be a politician, certainly not really good technicians. Good technicians want to be good technicians. Good politicians want to be good politicians. And unfortunately, that is what history has shown in the position of sheriff. Thank you.
So that is an accurate stroll down memory lane. I've worked with each of them. All of them were qualified. Sue Rohr went on to lead the academy, so that she trains other officers. And I understand that people can be competent and good technically, as well as being able to be good at getting elected, because people are smart enough to see when somebody is good at their job, and if they have a relationship with them, so they know what they've done in their job, and can see the data that shows that crime's down, and that people feel safe, then they will reelect them. And I hope that Mitzi, or whoever is the sheriff in the future, will have a long tenure. But we have chosen such good people, for the most part, that they've gone on to other excellent jobs. Steve Strahan is now the head of all the sheriffs in the entire state. And so, and John and I are going to do our stand, so we're doing well. Okay, well, then, I had a few questions, or comments, or whatever. So my concern, concerns range from the fact that 60% of the sheriff budget comes from Contract Cities, but yet it only has three votes on the council. That raises a big concern for me. Currently, because of politics, we are carrying 3.75 vacancies. Currently, because of politics, we've got the head of our county, who is not going to give us the full SRO. Thankfully, he stepped in and are helping us with that. So I don't want this to be a political position. I wouldn't have a Sheriff's Department answer to a fire. I wouldn't have the Fire Department answer to a sheriff's call. So I think that if we need the police, that we should have somebody who's qualified to answer for police, do the police. And I think what we've seen, and what I've seen, at least through this budget cycle, is I am not comfortable with the fact that we only have three votes for Contract Cities on the council. I don't think that we are represented well. I know you do a wonderful job for us, but when it comes down to the votes, I don't think we would be represented well. So...
So the SRO issue that you had is a very good example. The people who wanted to say no to your SRO mostly represent Seattle area. And so that is, you know, that's what happens. And I think that because the citizenry knows people who live out here and come out here, and you can talk to the people all over the county that are pleased with when the sheriff does step in, such as in a rescue with the helicopters or whatever, and can help mount a good awareness campaign of what the sheriff does well, as opposed to a number of council members who pick and choose. And, you know, even one of them was saying that we shouldn't even have a police department or sheriff's department. So that kind of thinking is different than what people outside of Seattle think. And so I think it's important that we have an elected sheriff that can speak up. We've seen in watching Carmen Best, who I believe is a woman of integrity, we've watched her go through agony till she finally resigned because she was under the political pressure of an elected official, the mayor. And we saw the outcome of that. If I had said to people six months ago, "This could happen," nobody would have believed it. But we all watched it happen. And we watched her to the point where she said, "I can't do this anymore," and resigned. So that's what can happen when you have it being political. Everybody says it will be political by voting. Well, I'm sorry, it's a small P when you go to the people. It's a big political P when you put it in the hands of 10 politically motivated people. And so I think that the P should be the small P of the people and letting them say what they want. And again, we all saw it on TV, play the reruns, and see what it looked like when we had an officer under the control of an elected executive. It was not good, and I just don't want that ever to happen again.
I'd like to respond briefly to that. Everyone tends to look at this as a Seattle sort of, this is what happened in Seattle. It's going to happen every place else. Well, I don't believe that. I believe the council was different than that. And you must remember that actually seven out of the nine council members actually have unincorporated areas within them. That's the very first thing. The second thing that you pointed out was the issue of where's the funding? What happens to that? The sheriff is not independently funded. The bottom line is, the way it is set up systemically is that the sheriff is funded by general funds of the county. And if you truly believe that those other six council members do not support the sheriff's office, then they can basically strangle it and starve it to death by just not authorizing funds. That's what could happen if you're really talking about that. The sheriff, it's a unique position in that they have, they're out there, they're bargaining, they're spending money on behalf of the county, yet they don't have their own budget. The county council sets the budget. The county council says, "We're going to give you this much money. Figure it out." It's not like the sheriff can come in and say, "We need this much more money," and they're going to get it. It comes out of the general fund. And as was pointed out, you don't want to have a fire chief go to sheriff's call. You don't want to have a sheriff go to the fire call. We don't elect our fire chiefs. Why do we elect our, you know, why would we elect our sheriff? We don't elect the county fire marshal. It's just, it's, I think the system is wrong-headed as it is set up now, frankly. We have someone who has, who heads an agency, is elected, yet has no real authority over their budget, how products are delivered, because the county council also passes the laws and tells the sheriff to enforce them. They pass the budget, and they say, "Do with it what you can." To believe that somehow the sheriff, in the face of a great deal of hostility, is going to somehow create a situation where they can squeeze more money out of a council that just says no, that is not going to happen. Right now, the bottom line is, is that 90% of the population of the county is in cities. We are unique. We are very unique. There's only approximately 10% of the county that is in unincorporated King County. The rest of it's determined by that. And with 57% of the budget coming from contract cities. Those contract cities, if you just decided to say, "You know what? We're going to shop this. You know what? We've been okay with the sheriff, but you know what? Redmond PD is right down the hill. We might want to, we might want to see what Redmond PD can do for us. Or what about Bellevue PD? They can do the same thing." That's what happens with some of the smaller cities like Medina, Hunts Point, et cetera. They use Bellevue PD. So it's possible that you could go out and shop it. Then what happens? Then you have an even smaller sheriff's budget out there affecting fewer and fewer people, and we're only having someone that should be a good contract administrator and understands regionalization of service. That is a unique position. That is more of a managerial position than a law enforcement position. These are all things to consider. It's, there's no right, there's no wrong. It's what's best. And that's why the Charter Review Commission came out and said, "This is best for our county at this particular time under these particular circumstances."
Okay, I'm going to finish making sure everybody has had a chance to ask questions first before I go on the second round. So Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Kenan and Councilmember Lambert. We are very blessed to have such good representatives on both sides of the issue. It is a tough issue. One thing that struck me is access and accountability to the people. And why that's important is, when you get to a situation when you have, you may argue that, well, if you don't like the way the executive or the council members make judgments on policy or what the police, or who's in the sheriff's position, vote them out. Well, it's not that easy, because if you have entrenched incumbents, they may have 10 different issues that they're elected on. And how they handle public safety may not outweigh the other nine that they're elected on. So they continue the policies, even though the people may like a different direction or a different way of handling police. So the only way you can accomplish a better connection to the people is through an elected sheriff. And also, the argument that elected official is a negative. I think it's a real positive, because that's a natural pipeline to the people, so that the public gives more input on a regular basis rather than through the bureaucracy or the philosophy of the entrenched incumbents. I also don't like the other people, the chief non-police telling the sheriff how to do their job. We rely on them, and if the people don't like what they're doing and how they're handling their job through the policies, et cetera, then they're going to get booted out, because they're a single-issue elected official. And so there's a red-hot spotlight on them for police work, and that leads to excellence, aligning the excellence to the people's wishes. And finally, I also am a little bit concerned about 33% of the representation of the council representing 57% of the contract dollars going for police work. So that's an imbalance that also causes me some concern. So yes, I would, and back to Councilmember Stewart, I'm very reluctant to make a position on a ballot measure of this type. But this is one instance, a rare instance, where in order for some AMIS to better, best align their public safety with the wishes of the people is to not support this initiative. So I would be favorable to consider an advisory vote on it.
Okay, is there any council member who has not spoken in the first round that wants to speak? Okay, then, going for round two, and I believe the first one I have is Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Who is on the King County Charter Review Board, or Charter Review Commission? What kind of representation is that? And what is the purpose or the mission of the King County Charter Review Commission? And you said you had a recommendation. It would be curious to know, was it reasonably unanimous? Was it a supermajority who agreed and endorsed or recommended these amendments? If we could just get a little history on that, that would be helpful.
Okay. The King County Charter Review Commission requires that at least 15 quote "freeholders" be appointed to review the county charter every 10 years and make recommendations to either amend, leave the county charter alone, or suggest other legislative changes that may occur in the state legislature. The way it was set up this time is that the county executive made certain appointments, the county council members made certain appointments, and then all of the quote "appointments" were then confirmed by the county council. We went in front of the county council, we gave our background, and then they asked for a little bit about us, and then we were appointed. And it started off with originally, I think, 23 members. We ended up, at the end, you know, it went on for quite some time, and it included everybody from the co-chairs, Ron Sims and Louise Miller, to people such as myself, who are not politicians at all, really just, I'm just a working guy, so to speak. And we had a number of people from special interests here, because it was a very diverse group of people. With this particular initiative, I believe it was 19 to 2 in favor of that. The two people voting against it were Louise Miller, number one, and Louise's position at the time, as I recall, was that the issue had been decided 10 years or 15 years before. She said, "Done, over with." Even though she was fine with it, it's like the issue's been decided. And the other was Sean, excuse me, I'm forgetting his name. He's the mayor of Maple Valley.
Sean Kelly.
Sean Kelly, yes, mayor of Maple Valley. And I can't remember specifically what Sean's opposition was to it, but he went along with Louise. But everyone else was unanimously in favor of this being, we want a professional to do a professional's job. That was sort of the way we looked at it. And that was it.
Okay. And then my other question, so a number of times it's come up that 57% of the budget comes from contract cities, yet only three of the nine council members represent contract cities. But I thought that the King County sheriff is elected from all of King County. And so wouldn't the majority of the people voting for the sheriff not be in contract cities? A vast majority of the people voting for the sheriff would not be from contract cities. Would that not be true?
That's in fact true. So right now, as it stands, 70, well, as of the last census, we do know that it's probably changed, it's probably even more skewed now. At the time of the census information, we had 74% of the population living in cities that have their own police departments. So you had, at that point, 11% of the population being in unincorporated King County, 15% of the population being in cities with contracts, the largest of which is, I think, the city of Shoreline. And then the remainder of the individuals voting on this position being within incorporated King County with their own police chiefs, the biggest of which is the voting block of the city of Seattle. But yes, indeed, that was one of those questions that, I think it was, one of the reporters from Q13 asked me at one time, was like, "Well, why does Seattle care?" Seattle votes on it. So you basically got the will of the people being determined by the city of Seattle on this anyway. The sheriff is elected by everyone at large. But as Councilmember Lambert pointed out, the sheriff does provide certain regional services.
Right. But we would actually improve our representation by having council members selecting this as opposed to it going out to the general population. We would have a much larger say than we do by just putting it out for vote.
But that is, in fact, the argument that Tim Sees made regarding this. Even though he was in favor of having this an appointed position, his argument was, he said, "Well, the counter could be made that we're actually providing way more representation than would be allowed otherwise because of the, of the fact that there's a tendency for, at least in his point of view, and Councilmember Lambert might have a different opinion, that there is a tendency on the part of the council members to defer to those areas that are more greatly affected."
Yeah, but, and that's fair, but I'm just looking at it right from a AMIS standpoint, we would actually have better representation and more of a say in who the sheriff was by having Councilmember Lambert representing us, who would have, you know, a vote there than by just having it be going out to the general public. And I would assume, and maybe Councilmember Lambert can weigh in, but I would assume that your fellow council members would listen to you and the other members who represent contract cities when matters came up that would more greatly affect those areas. But, you know, I understand you guys all have a really great working relationship there. So would you agree with that, Councilmember Lambert?
I definitely agree with the part that says that the other council members would hear my voice. They have no choice but to listen to me. So that part I for sure agree with. But the, it still gets down to three council members that represent contract cities and six that don't. So it would still be that the majority would not rule in that. The beauty of the people is that when something isn't right, you know, and you go to your friends in Seattle or anyplace else, and you say, "These are the issues." Most people who live in other places in the county come out to this part to recreate, to visit friends, to shop, to get pumpkins, whatever. And so when they think something's making the people who live out here unhappy, they get on board pretty much. And so you have a much better base when the entire citizenry of the county knows what's going on. Let's see, I wrote a couple of things.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at the math. And if the argument is only three of nine council members represent contract cities, only 15% of the population represents contract cities. So when we put it out to a vote of the people, only 15% of the people in contract cities are voting on the sheriff, whereas we actually get 33% of the council representing contract cities voting on the, you know, weighing in on that. So just looking at it from a pure number, since that was brought up a number of times, I think, I'm just trying to think through this from a, you know, what is going to get AMIS better representation? The points that I have here are, you know, we've heard a lot about consistency. I would think that people being appointed would likely be more consistent than people being elected. We know that people can be elected and they come and go, and could be removed and changed every election. The consistency would exist from people who are appointed. They would only be removed if there was actually a problem, and there would be more agility to do that if needed. If someone's doing a good job, I could see them certainly being there for longer. I do feel like there's improved accountability and improved access for public input. The county council has meetings regularly where people can come and provide public input, just like we do. There aren't a lot of, you know, public meetings with the sheriff for people to come and provide their public input. So I do feel like there's actually improved accountability through the representative government. I want to point out that there was a comment made, "This is in no way, not even remotely close to anything relating to defunding the police." So the signs that are being put up are incredibly misleading. This is not about defunding the police. This is simply about changing the model so that instead of us having to find a sheriff who is also an exceptional politician, we can just find a sheriff who is an exceptional sheriff. And I don't think we have to look any further than the national stage to know that people who can get elected aren't always good at their jobs. So I think that, you know, that's an argument that anyone here who's a politician can say that just because you can get elected doesn't mean you're good at your job. say that just because you can get elected doesn’t mean you’re good at your job.
Councilmember, I’m trying to be cautious of everybody’s time, so I’m trying to limit just--
No, I’m sorry, I will not get cut off. I, it’s my turn to speak, and I will finish. I have a couple of points here, but thank you.
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order. Yeah, we’ve been listening.
So I--
No, point of order.
Do your point.
Okay, we’ve been listening, Pam. Appreciate all the, but ask the questions and move forward, please. I mean, you’re--
Well, other people make comments.
If you’re going to talk about national politics when we’re talking about a King County position, then you’re out of order. Okay? I don’t want to be hearing about national politics in some hypothetical--
Mayor, are you going to weigh in here? It’s not--
Yeah, that’s what you were doing.
Okay, so I’m not going to call that, I’m going to ask that you just finish your questions that you have for our guests that are here this evening.
Is it just questions or is it comments? Because other people make comments, so I’m confused. Is it just questions or are we making comments as well?
Okay, let’s stick to questions. We are over our time, so let’s all be, let’s all just stick to questions, round two, let’s stick solely to questions.
Will we be allowed to make comments then, if this is going to go to a vote, or no? Because other people have made their comments, so I just want to understand what the process is going to be.
For any questions that you might have right now for our guests, please stick solely to questions.
Okay. I did have a question, actually, for you, Mayor. You talked about vacancies not being filled because of politics. I’m confused by what that means. And how that relates to the sheriff.
So all of the issues, all of the branches of, and departments of the county were given an amount of money that they needed to cut because of the loss in revenue to the county. So the sheriff’s office, like everybody else, had to make a cut. Hers was $12 million, and in part, Lee, that was in some FTEs that she cut so that she could make her budget quota.
But that wouldn’t be any different whether they were elected or appointed, right? Those budget cuts would still be there. Correct?
Mayor and council, I’ll let you go back, Kathy. I sit on the Contract City Managers Group, and that is in fact not the case. They’re ignoring our ILAs, and the Contract City Managers confront, have confronted the sheriff on that issue. And the sheriff is now relooking at it, and hopefully will get some of our money back through the annual reconciliation process. But they are not accounting for the vacancies, and they are charging too much overhead back to the contract cities. And as to the budget--
But you’re not--
Excuse me, but as to the contract amount, is nearly 60% of the sheriff’s budget is contributed to by the contract cities.
Totally, yeah. I totally get that. And again, looking at what would be best for a city like Samamish, but the, if we have an ILA in place, whether it’s an appointed position or an elected position, you know, the, King County would still have to honor that. So again, I don’t, I don’t know that that would change one way or the other, whether this is an elected or an appointed position. Isn’t that correct?
Well, right now, I’ve had to challenge Dow Constantine on his budgeting recommendation to the county council because they made a restrictive recommendation on the budget for all SROs. And it was through the email that I initiated with the CEO’s office that I went back over to Kathy Lambert, as well as to Claudia Balducci, representing to them the situation that we had, and that we were going to be in a challenging position if we were not completely funded. That was--
Okay, but again, that’s happening with an elected sheriff, so none of these--
No, this is with an elected, this is with an elected CEO who’s exercised his--
But we’re talking right now how this would affect whether we have an elected sheriff. I’m trying to stay to the point and to the subject, which is, this is happening while we have an elected sheriff. So these issues are going to exist whether we have an elected sheriff or an appointed sheriff. They’re not going to change. I think that is all I have for questions at this time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the issue would get worse with an appointed sheriff and the fact that the opponent sheriff would not be allowed into the negotiations like they are now. They negotiate under the working conditions at the bargaining table. They would not be at the bargaining table, as it is written in the Charter Amendment Number Five. Your question that you were concerned about the misleading signs, if you look closely at the wording on the sign, it says Charter Amendments Five and Six. Five is about the appointment, and six is about the financing. So you are correct that if you were only seeing number five, that would be correct. But the signs do say five and six, and it is the six that takes and talks about the finances.
I would just like to make a correction, though. Who appears at the bargaining table is wholly dependent upon who the bargaining team is when she’s talking about that. And I don’t want to delve too far into labor law, but again, fire chiefs are appointed, they are not elected. They are generally at the bargaining table, generally, but not always. Sometimes you have a bargaining representative. Again, the only thing that are negotiated are wages, hours, and working conditions, not the budget. Whatever budget you have is what you have. If the wages go up, then there are fewer positions, FTEs, that you can afford. That is the way it works. Under Washington state labor law, you can only demand wages, you can’t demand a budget. That is within the legislative discretion, because if people in King County say, we aren’t going to pay anymore, doesn’t matter how much, you can, you can gold plate the sheriff’s office, you only have so much money. And that’s what it boils down to. So you’re correct, Councilmember Stewart, that it doesn’t make any difference.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, so council members, do, is there anybody else with any questions? I’m looking in the chat box, seeing any. Okay. Thank you. I want to thank both of our guests this evening. You guys did a great job.
Mayor, are we moving away from questions on to another topic, or can we discuss having our council take a position on this?
Well, Councilmember Lambert just wanted to know if we wanted to also discuss the Amendment Six.
It’s not on our agenda, I don’t think we can, actually.
Okay. We only had five on there, so. Okay, well, we can. I’m following whatever council wants to do. Are you making that motion?
I’m just, it sounded like you were about to move off the topic, and I wanted to--
I know, I’m looking for direction from council.
--get the opportunity to take a position. Okay, then I need me to take a position on this.
Okay, and I need a-- Who was that? Who was our second?
Ross.
Okay, Councilmember Ross, okay. Okay, so I’m going to have, Deputy Mayor, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just, I think we should take a position on this, and my first motion is simply to gauge the council’s interest in taking a position. And if that passes, then I would make a motion to subsequent to that. So again, my first motion is simply just that we’re going to take a position, not what position we’re taking.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to take a position.
I’ll-- Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I’m looking for any discussion on that.
Yeah, I’ll speak to that. I think that, you know, again, when I first joined the council, there was a school bond for Lake Washington School District. The council came out very strongly and said we should not be influencing something that the people are taking a vote on. It’s out there, voting has already started. I think it’s great that we provided a lot of information to the people, but I think us weighing in isn’t us listening to the people, but influencing the people on something that they now have a lot of information on. If, you know, making sure that we can build more school capacity is an important issue to our community, then I don’t think this one, since it is not going to directly impact the budgeting, it would actually, you know, I just don’t think we should be taking a position here. I think we should leave it to the people, and I appreciate that we provided this service so that people could hear an in-depth discussion on it.
Okay, any other comments on this? Oh, Councilmember Ritchie.
Yeah, thank you. The only comment, I guess, would be that I don’t know that, and that’s a lot of information to receive, you know, in one, in one chunk from two pretty qualified sources. So while I mentioned it before, I do think we have time before we have the election actually ballots due on the third. I’d like to review, when we’re not seeing, you know, virtual chambers, to review what’s been said and to listen to what my constituents have to say about it, because I don’t really know that there’s a whole lot of people that have had a chance to speak out on this issue. I’m concerned that, I mean, I kind of was paying attention to what the Charter Review Committee or Charter View Group is doing, but that’s just because I’m nerdy that way. I mean, I don’t know that most people are paying attention. So I learned a lot tonight, and I like the chance to speak to my constituents and the folks that I circle with, just to see what their opinions are and to gauge that before we take a vote on it. Having said that, I frankly am not prepared to vote on it myself, because I don’t really, you know, I need to process what I heard tonight, and I really didn’t think we were going to take a position on that. And I don’t know that we need to take a position tonight necessarily. I appreciate that that may be what we wind up doing, but I would ask that there’s some opportunity for us to try to understand the impact of what we’re getting ready to do and how that’s going to impact our constituents going forward, because it is complicated. There is a lot of gray, and there is a lot of history there that frankly I didn’t know tonight from them in terms of the history of the King County sheriff and how those things came to be. And I think that would help me personally. So without speaking up or down on it personally, yet, I would be opposed to taking a position tonight, mostly because I just am not prepared to do that based upon what I’ve heard and the research I feel like I need to do. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments that anybody wants to make before we, okay, you, Councilmember--
Yeah, him, you know that guy at the end.
Councilmember--
I’m going to agree with Councilmember Ritchie and Councilmember Stewart that I’m not prepared to make a, and I don’t see a need to make any type of vote or make a position this evening. Thanks.
Okay, I’m going to comment on that whether we voted on the school or not, to me, doesn’t matter because of the fact that we aren’t, to me, the schools, the one thing we are responsible for is public safety. And so we have an interest and a vested interest in this particular subject. And so I do believe that it is something we should be taking a stance on. The schools, we have an interest through our children and that sort of thing, but it isn’t a direct interest. So this one, we do have a direct vested interest in, and it is part of our role, and I think that is the difference. So I do believe the council is to take its stance on this one. I do believe that’s why it’s different. And so I am prepared to vote on it, because I feel very strongly about it. But let’s, let’s see what the numbers are. We have a motion on the floor. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, the motion on the floor. Deputy Mayor, could you please repeat?
Yep, just to decide if our council is going to move forward and take a position.
Okay, and the second was from Councilmember Ross. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we have four opposed to three. We will not be taking a position. Okay, I do want to thank Mr. Williams, and I want to thank Councilmember Lambert. Thank you very much for coming this evening, because I do think that anybody who was listening tonight got a lot of information.
Mayor, this is Jason. May I raise a point?
Absolutely.
Though I don’t have the capacity to do this in my position, I would ask from the council’s consent, or you as mayor, to include the other charter, the other amendment in our discussions at the next council meeting, prior to the November 3 election date, so that we can cover that topic prior to the election and have a similar discussion if possible. I don’t know if we can get pros and cons in here that quickly, but I think it’s worthwhile to discuss these things in an open meeting so that our constituents can listen in, be informed, and frankly, so that we as council members can be informed as well from people that are very much more plugged in. Thank you.
When our next council meeting, the day before the election, or the day before ballots are due?
It is, and I don’t know if they’re both prepared that they could do it this evening.
So I don’t, I don’t know--
It’s not on your agenda.
No, I don’t think--
Okay.
I don’t have that that would be--
You want it to the next meeting? Okay, all right.
I mean, if it’s possible, that’s my ask. If not, that’s fine. I just think it’s important that we talk about these things, and a lot of people vote late, so.
Okay, thank you.
It’s the day before--
Okay, the next thing that we have on the agenda this evening is the artwork present representing civil liberties and racial social justice. And that would be, is that Anjali?
Yes, I’ll introduce.
And she’s here, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and Mr. City Manager. I’m Anjali Meyer, Director of the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Tonight, we have with us the Chair and Vice Chair of the Arts Commission, and Chris Jordan, Recreation Manager and Staff Liaison to the Arts Commission, who will jointly report out on their progress on the artwork project representing civil liberties and racial and social justice. Before I hand it over to Chris, I wanted to let you know that the purpose of tonight’s check-in is to recap the work done by the commission in the last few months, including one meeting with a couple of partner organizations, followed by a community-wide outreach effort using Connect Samamish, as well as share their proposed ideas that the commission came up with. They intend to continue to work with partners, as council may direct them to, but they did not want to go too far on an idea without council support. You will also hear budget numbers for what this project could cost. Please know that these are allowances based on past projects. Lastly, I know that the Arts Commission is very pleased that City Council asked them to work on this project, and are open to your questions and welcome your feedback at the end of the presentation. With that, I’ll turn it over to Chris Jordan.
Thank you, Anjali. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Anjali, and good evening, council. My name is Chris Jordan, the deputy director of the Arts Commission. I want to introduce Ashley, who is Arts Commission Chair, and Julian, who is Arts Commission Vice Chair, who will be presenting portions of this presentation. The commission would like to thank the council for this opportunity to check in with you tonight, look forward to your feedback and direction in the early stages of this project. Ashley, Julian, and I will be giving a brief presentation of artwork representing civil liberties and racial slash social justice. At the end, we will be available to answer any questions you have. This presentation will cover a recap on the timeline of work that Arts Commission has done, three concept options the council can consider, design and location for artwork, estimated funding needed for this project, and next steps, the type of community involvement the commission has done, and future steps for partnerships, and finally, next steps the council is about to take for this project. Now I would like to pass it over to Arts Chair, Ashley.
Good evening, council. For the last few months, the Arts Commission has met multiple times to narrow down the scope and type of artwork concepts to represent civil liberties and racial and social justice. The Arts Commission’s goal for the project is to have an art piece that is everlasting and makes a statement. We had our first meeting on June 22 to discuss this great opportunity. The commission developed a survey on Connect Samamish to engage the community and see what type of artwork they were interested in. The commission narrowed location areas for-- location areas for the artwork and possible concept ideas for a call for proposal. Finally, we developed an estimated budget based on previous permanent art that was placed throughout the city. Based on this estimate, the budget for all three recommendations is $125,000, which includes all associated costs. The first option is a labyrinth concept with a centerpiece sculpture. This concept provides an interactive maze or singular path with an option to have questions and/or history that will guide you to the centerpiece with possible artwork within each section. The four sections of the labyrinth could represent the four interrelated principles of social justice and the centerpiece sculpture, which will be small to medium size, would focus on these principles with the meaning of fullness and unity. Also, the photos on this slide are just examples from other places and not specifically what the Commission is suggesting. Option one, I'm sorry, option two is a sculpture or permanent structure. This structure or sculpture would represent the four interrelated principles of social justice, and the concept would allow the artist or artists to suggest specific designs and the idea through a call for proposal process. This could be interactive. Also, the photos on this slide are just examples from other places and not specifically what the Commission is looking for. Option three is a permanent sculpture of children playing and/or together. This artwork's design would be specifically focused on children playing and being together. During the call for proposal process, there could be a variety of designs based on concepts depending on rotation and style of the artwork. This photo on this slide is an example of the concept. Kirkwin has something similar as well. The Commission met with Rotary and the Knights of Columbus to discuss the Rotary Peace Program, which can be poles or structures. The Rotary's vision statement is, together, we see a world where people unite and take action to create lasting change across the globe, in our communities, and in ourselves. The Rotary Peace Program can be peace poles, but peace symbols can come in all shapes, materials, media, and sizes. Some examples are shown on this slide. Currently, Rotary is working on the peace project with Eastside Catholics, the YMCA, and the CWU. These structures create symbolism around peace and inclusion in our community. Now, I would like to pass it over to the Arts Vice Chair, Jillian. The proposed location of this art piece is somewhere within Sammish Commons. It is the preferred space of the Commission because of its central location and popularity with the public. The specific location within the Sammish Commons has not been determined, and any location would need to be vetted further. Projects of this nature have demonstrated to cost $100,000 to $150,000, including associated site improvements and expenses related to design, fabrication, transportation, and installation of the artwork itself. $50,000 is available for this project under Professional Services in the Arts Section budget. The Commission will pursue possible funding options through partnerships during and after the call for proposal process. Additional options are unspent funds due to the pandemic from Professional Services in the Recreation Section budget. Additional money could potentially come from Art Commission budget after factoring and funding committed to other projects. The Arts Commission carried out a survey to the community to gauge opinions and receive feedback on artwork representing civil liberties and racial and social justice. The survey was conducted on Connect Sammish from July 19 through August 17. The Commission received 19 responses on questions ranging from, what words, images, and/or symbols do you associate with social justice? Two, what space or site in the city would be appropriate for a visual statement? The community feedback was helpful to the Commission. Again, partnerships are important to the Commission, and we will seek possible partnerships throughout this process. The Commission unanimously voted to recommend moving forward with the labyrinth concept with a centerpiece sculpture. The labyrinth concept would provide an interactive element, and the sculpture would unify the concept. I would now like to pass it over to Chris Jordan.
The council would like to move forward with one of these options presented. In excess of staff, the Commission will give a call proposals with a concept design focused on sculptwork for selected options. Keep in mind, full design and ideas around selected concepts would be given to the artist or group during the call proposals because of the professional experience creating such installations. During the call proposals, the Commission would seek partnerships for possible funding and work with staff to finalize specific location within the Sammish Commons. After the call proposal entry is completed, the proposal will be finalized by the Commission. A maximum of three proposals will be selected and moved forward, and will be presented to Arts Commission for their evaluation. Important note, the Commission doesn't have to take any proposals if it doesn't meet the standards of, doesn't meet the Commission's standards. The Commission will present finalists with designs to the council for their feedback, approval, and selection of the artists or artists to move forward with. Council, thank you again for allowing staff of the Commission to present to you tonight. Please let us know what option the council would like to move forward with this inning, and if there's a decision on a lot of budget allowance for the project. Important note on this project, the Commission will be back in front of council again to present options on specific designs, options on artist selections, specific location, narrow down budget, and establish partnerships for this project. Any comments or questions? Thank you.
Okay, Council, oh, here we go. Deputy Mayor.
I'm not sure that I'm first in the queue, but if I am, turn my camera around the other way.
You are first in the chat box.
Okay, perfect. So first, I'd like to explore other locations. I appreciate the idea that being central and in the Commons, but I feel like we already have a lot of art in that vicinity. There is a piece right now in the plaza, a permanent piece, right by where the sand sculpture is. And then we have permanent art inside City Hall. We just recently put in a brand new sculpture on Southeast Fourth, which is visible from City Hall. I really think it's important that as we go forward with our art, especially something like this, that we consider alternative locations to help spread out our art around the city. So that is my, my first thing. Second, I'm interested in what the financial impact of partnering with someone like Rotary could be, considering the budget here for this piece, and the fact that $100,000 is, we don't know exactly where that's going to come from. The idea of partnering with someone in our community who's interested in doing a piece, and considering what I heard about Central Washington University being a part of it, it's possible that, you know, that may be a location, although that still feels very in the middle of Sammish. And, you know, again, I just want to explore other areas. But I am interested in, in hearing from either staff or Commission members about partnering with Rotary, and from a financial aspect, what that looks like.
So I know this, this is Chris, sorry. Can you hear me? Okay, so when I initially met with Rotary, and we are looking to go partner with other groups after this, so we definitely would need to get with Rotary to discuss further about finding a possible partnering on this project. So it would also be with Kiwanis and any other kind of groups that are out there. So we do plan on reaching out and sitting down. I know the Commission really want to just get a kind of foundation and then kind of direction like what you're giving us now, and then we'll be reaching out to all these partners.
Okay, so we don't have an idea when you all originally met with Rotary, you did not garner what they might be able to bring forward from a financial, from a dollar figure point, or no?
It was more surrounded around the peace program, but then it was lightly touched on about the budget. But when Ramiro was giving kind of the meeting notes, it wasn't really, he wasn't saying that they could definitely do budget right now or add something for this because of COVID, and we're kind of in the middle of that. But we didn't really dive into it. So we probably didn't meet with them again to really discuss the budget part of that.
Okay. I guess, you know, in particular, I'm drawn to the one sculpture they had with the hands that were kind of interlocked. And, you know, not that that's where we land, but I think there is some potential there. And, you know, the more organizations and people we bring into the project, I think that's a good thing. But the financial piece is also enticing admittedly. And then as far as my feedback goes on the three options presented, aside from the, the interlocking hands that Rotary had in theirs, option three, which is the permanent structure with the children playing together, you know, the picture there is just kind of representative of something similar. But I'm of the mindset that art is always subjective, and it, it needs to be, and it will be, an individual thing for everyone that comes to look at it. And, you know, depending, I imagine a wide breadth of, you know, children being present there, you know, whether, you know, from, you know, different nationalities, maybe there's one in a wheelchair, just something where we're not selling it out for people what it is, that anybody that comes and looks at the art piece, they can look at it and say, I see myself in that, and it means this for me. And somebody totally different could come, and it might mean something completely different for them, and that's okay, because art is just such a subjective thing, and it's very personal for people. So I kind of narrowed in on that option three and the children specifically. So that's my feedback.
Thank you.
Okay, since we don't have a lineup, I'm going to give you my feedback right away. I kind of zeroed in on option three with the kids playing in that circle, mostly because I, when I envision it, I envision, you know, kids from every culture holding hands, playing a game, and that somebody could see it and envision themselves within that circle, and knowing that, you know, we include everybody in this game. It's one of those of, you're included with us, this, you know, we include everybody sort of thing. So that's, that's what I was looking for. And so that one just, that one just really, really hit me when I saw it, and I really liked it. The concern I have with the labyrinth, with using any words, is there are words that were okay five years ago that frankly, you wouldn't dare use today. So the idea of having words used, I'm very cautious about. I think that that could, that could be a bad thing. So I'm very cautious of number one for that very reason. So anyway, that's my feedback. Councilmember Ross. I think you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I was on mute. No, I, well-stated, Mayor. I guess, I guess general question, it, option three I do like as well. I like symbolism rather than words. The interrelated principles of social justice, equity, participation, access, and rights, that sculpture would represent that. How, how does it represent it? Is it something overt? Is it, when you look at that sculpture, it symbolically represents that? Maybe Chris or someone can help answer how you incorporate those four elements in a sculpture without words and symbolism, I guess.
Yeah, we would have to do symbolism and something like that, because most, any type of artwork you have, you want a small description, but we want to do symbolism. But I think we're still so early in the stages, we don't know what like the artist or organization comes back with, what kind of symbols that could represent all this and come from that. So we're still looking and searching for those different kinds of symbols, I would say, so we don't have an answer on that part. But we were just trying to have a focus more of those four principles to help out when we do a call proposal that kind of narrow it down a little bit for the artist or whoever is going to apply, so that you can have kind of an idea of what they are kind of looking to do. So.
Yeah, I like to offer that, I don't want to necessarily box the artist in the corner to try to represent everything. But I think it would be important to make sure that these are some of the areas that we want to address in this social justice equity and so on, as well as inclusiveness and diversity in our community. So that's something we want to celebrate with the sculpture and be symbolic, and I agree with Mayor, not, not words affixed to it.
So just, just to ask for feedback, like, just keeping it more simple, like to the title part, and not narrowing it down from the title, you're saying more, too?
I, I, I think when it, when we talk about the different tenants and principles, that gives an artist different symbolism ideas to incorporate, but to try to symbolically represent all four, I'm not sure I, we try to, we would get, want to get ourselves boxed in on that. I don't know what others thinking, but I'm thinking from an art, without words, it really does get difficult. And I think the spirit of what we're seeing here on social justice, the four pillars, should be represented in our sculpture from a symbolic standpoint. I don't, I don't see four different parts of the sculpture. It's basically, a little more artistic freedom, is the way to put it. So.
Understand, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work you guys are doing. I love the idea of having something out there representing social justice. I think that if we're going to do something representing social justice, we should try to pull in a more diverse group of people to get input on it. So I'm not sure that a group of seven, I'll call us all middle-aged. White people are the right, you know, wealthy white people are the right people to be deciding what's best representative of, of the social justice. So I would love to see you guys take this and run with it. Maybe you can reach out to the high schools and get a really diverse group of students there to help weigh in and give a lot of input. I think that would be far more representative of what we really are looking for here. So that would just be my input.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments?
Mayor, we are looking for direction tonight, so we are hoping that council will actually vote on an option. That'll give the Arts Commission some guidance to move forward with that option and engage partners.
Okay, so they are looking for a direction from us tonight. So I need for somebody to, to set a direction for us.
I know we, can you hear me okay?
Pardon?
Yes.
I know, I know we move, give direction to the Sammish Arts Commission to explore more on option three, which is the permanent structure of children playing together.
Okay, hearing no comments. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Mayor, I'd like to make another motion.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to move that the Arts Commission explore alternative locations other than just the Sammish Commons to place this sculpture.
I'll second.
Okay, and we have a second here from Councilmember Train. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven zero. Seven, zero. Okay. The last thing we need to address would be the monetary.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, you're on a roll.
I don't have a motion for this one because I don't know if we're getting the other $100,000. So.
I make, I make a motion that they have, the Arts Commission works with a baseline budget of 50,000 and to do something bigger and better will require funding from alternate sources.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a, I just have a question.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. So this is the funding for the sculpture. Does that include the $50,000 for the, what is it, the arts master plan or whatever? Because I, I think I'd rather see us put it into the art at this point than into the professional services of, of doing that. Are those two separate things?
And they're two separate things, Councilmembers. This is Anjali. Yeah. So I think you're talking about the strategic plan that is proposed in the 2122 budget.
Right.
Right. And this is.
It's also mentioned here in the deck. Right.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Sorry. I, I just, it was, it was also mentioned here in the, in the slides. And so that's why I was wondering if, if that was.
Yeah. The numbers happen to match, but they're different. The 50,000 here is out of the current 2020 professional services of the Arts Commission budget. And that would be for the sculpture.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, first of all, I'm going to have Councilmember Ross repeat his motion.
The baseline budget for this project, our project, is 50,000 as approved by the council with any additional funding seeking funding partners to exceed that 50,000 budget.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Can we take a quick break before we?
Okay. So with that, yes, let's take a health and safety break. How about a Sammamish five? Let's see, what time is it? It is, it is 10 to nine. So how about being back here at nine o'clock? Okay. See you back in a Sammamish five. Bye. I believe we have everyone back. Okay. We are back to our regular meeting on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. Okay. Next thing we have up is our public hearing. And this is the public hearing regarding ordinance 02020 granting to Comcast Cable Communications LLC the right privilege authority and franchise to construct, operate, maintain, reconstruct, repair and upgrade the cable system upon, over, under, along, across and through the franchise area for the purpose of providing cable services, providing for severity, establishing an effective date. Woo. First reading and second reading will be on November 2nd. And this will be calling the meeting open. And first thing is, do we have any callers in for the hearing?
Yes, Mayor. We did not receive any indication that any of the callers this evening wanted to talk to the public hearing, but I do see that we have one caller on the line. So I want to give them the opportunity to unmute themselves and state that they would like to speak. If you've called into the meeting, if you can hit star six to unmute yourself and state that you would like to speak, then we can add you to the list of public hearing callers. Again, that number is star six if you would like to speak to the public hearing. It doesn't look like we have anybody who's here for the public hearing this evening, Mayor.
Excellent. Okay. So then we will move on to who's going to be giving the presentation for this. Okay. Jeff.
Mayor.
Yes.
Hi, Mayor. City council members and city manager. Before you deny for consideration is a franchise agreement between the city of Sammamish and Comcast. The city has been without, has been operating without a formal agreement since 2004. After staff presentation, we'll ask the mayor to open up the public hearing for comment and testimony if any. Our presenter tonight will be city engineer Andrew Zager. And during the Q and A portion related to the agreement and our legal review, we have city attorney Lisa Marshall available for this item. So Andrew, with that?
Well, okay. Well, good evening, Sammamish Mayor, deputy mayors, fellow council members. I'm Andrew Zakers. Like Jeff mentioned, we also have President Lisa Marshall for the city attorney. Also, we have Terry Davis on board, who is the senior director of external government affairs for Comcast in the Washington area. Together with Anthony Richkov of Public Works and ourselves, we have been working, I want to say over a year now to come together with this franchise draft franchise agreement to present to council and present for comment and possible adoption in the next council meeting. So tonight we do have a little presentation to kind of go over what we have worked with for, over the past year. As mentioned, currently the city does not have a, a valid franchise agreement with Comcast since August 31st, 2004. When the city incorporated, we adopted the 1996 franchise agreement that was negotiated with King County and was one of the first ordinances that the city adopted back in 99. Since that time, the city has been collecting a 5% franchise fee with Comcast on a quarterly basis. Roughly, we're getting $200,000 a quarter. And then also, 5% is the maximum amount of impact of franchise fees that we can get. That is through a federal UFC ruling and also governed by the FCC order of 2019. During this time, Comcast does continue to apply for permits, right-of-way permits to construct and install maintenance systems within the public right-of-way that is overseen by Public Works. Legal authority for franchise agreements is governed by RCW 35A 47040, pretty much states that we do have the authority to permit, regulate and give restrictions and conditions for work within the public right-of-way for transmission, distribution of utilities such as electrical signals, communications, gas, steam, and liquid fuel, gas, water, sewer and other private and publicly owned operated facilities that are used in our right-of-way. Cable franchises are largely governed by federal law and FCC, so they're a little exempt. And in this state, they're, they do have a statewide franchise agreement. Some of the highlights of our proposed franchise agreement does give Comcast non-exclusive authority to construct, operate, maintain, reconstruct, repair, upgrade the fiber optic based cable systems within the public right-of-way. This franchise is not a substitute for business license. They are still required to obtain one for, within the city of Sammamish. And also they are required to obtain right-of-way permits for work within our right-of-way. The terms of the agreement is initial 10 years and then they would automatically renew for up to three additional times for five years of each period. So a total of 25 years would be the maximum extent of this agreement. Some of the powers that the city does retain with this agreement is we have the authority to manage our right-of-way and enforce the authority that we do for all work that's in the right-of-way, which is what we have with pretty much every, every other use that, or contractor that does work within the public right-of-way. The right-of-way permits do, they do allow us to get reimbursed for administrative fees or inspection fees, any fees that we have to manage and inspect the work done in the permit. Now, I did see a question just pop up from Councilman Gamlin.
I can wait till you're done with your presentation to ask if that works for you.
Okay. That'll be great. We can just save the questions at the end. It's a very short presentation, so we're zipping right through this. As far as the franchise agreement, there is a franchise fee that we want, would like to maintain. We would like to still collect up to the 5% max that we have that, you know, currently Comcast has been paying the city and we just want to continue it through the direction of this franchise agreement as well. And it is based on the gross revenues that they have within the city. Liability, the Comcast is required to go through general indemnification provision from the city officials and employees, indemnification for relocation. They must carry insurance requirements for the minimum coverage as per agreed upon from WCIA. WCIA was also included in the review of this franchise agreement. So as we drafted it up, we want to make sure it's consistent with our, our insurance requirements. Also, we do have included a performance bond requirement of $50,000 to ensure the full good faith efforts for the performance within the right-of-way. In addition to the work in, for the, within the right-of-way, Comcast is providing access channels, currently channel 21 for our council meetings. Comcast will continue to provide one access channel for the government access at no additional charge. In addition, there are optional clauses for, the city has an option for pass-through charges if we wanted to include equipment purchases or buy additional purchases or construction of capital improvements for the access channel. Capital contribution shall not exceed 25 cents per subscriber per month. And the city shall have discretion to allocate capital contribution in accordance to whatever applicable laws we have according to it. In the event of the, you know, there are some revocation clauses in the franchise. In the event that we do have some default, the city, we do have a right to revoke the franchise. There's authority to amend, all with agreement by both parties. And then conditions of acceptance within 60 days received of the executed franchise and shall be accepted filing the city courts unconditional written acceptance terms, provisions, the conditions will, will then start the franchise timeframe. And then with that, we're at the end and we're open for questions.
Okay. In the chat box here, we've got Councilmember Gamlin, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah. Thanks for that information. So we haven't had a franchise agreement, it seems, for 16 years, the last 16 years. Could you just touch on possibly what are the advantages or, and/or the disadvantages in enacting this franchise agreement now or adopting this franchise agreement now? And also, has city council looked at this franchise agreement before at any point? And if so, is there a reason that it was not adopted?
Okay. I can touch on why. I'll answer a couple of questions. And if Lisa has anything to add, I, I'll let her. The second question, it has, this, this agreement has not been presented to council. We've been drafting it up internally like our normal processes. And then this is the chance where we actually present it to council. Once we have vetted it between both parties, making sure that there's agreement between the city and Comcast, we have a document that's been drafted by, through staff, is when we present to council. And this is the opportunity for council to review. And if they have comments or any proposals to amend, and if we have directed, we would go back to the drawing board and work with Comcast if that, if that's what council would still choose. Can we go to?
If it hasn't, if this hasn't been put forward to council before, again, why after 16 years have we seen this? Or why hasn't it been proposed in the past?
Um, it hasn't, well, I can only speak for the last five years. It hasn't been a priority. We had some other franchise agreements that we were working on, namely some of the fiber optic companies in the last few years. We had Sino, we had WAVE. And then the last franchise agreement that we were on the table to go down the chopping block was PSC, where we had to work with PSC Gas and Electric. That was two years ago. And then after that, we started working on the cable companies, which would be this company. And then I believe frontier, we still do have a franchise. And then.
Hey, Andrew?
Lisa?
Yeah, I'm the municipal city attorney. I just want to mention that Terry Davis is on the line. And Terry's been working with numerous municipal clients, several of them my municipal clients in the past on Comcast franchises. So he has a lot of history to share. If, if Terry wouldn't mind chiming in on this question, I'd appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you very much. And thank you for the time to be here. So I just want to throw something up. We do have an acting franchise. It is the King County franchise that we've been working under. We secured our renewal rights under the federal law by providing notice that we do want to renew that franchise. And so we have been working on and off with various city staffs. I think it's just really, you know, the city has had many more priorities than just renewing the franchise and, and they were satisfied with the way we were working under the King County franchise. We, this is really just, you know, getting established, this franchise would renew under similar terms and conditions that are, you know, your neighboring cities have renewed under. And it's, and just bringing you up to speed on, you know, rules and regulations that, that meet the standards for regulating cable services within a, a local franchising authority. It is up to the local franchising authority to approve the franchise. You have the authority to, to administer the cable service regulations for your services. Hope that helps.
Yeah. Lisa, could I speak to you? What are the disadvantages to the city of Sammamish in enacting if we would adopt this franchise agreement?
I don't really see any disadvantages. In fact, it's more locally, it's, it's more locally appropriate to the city of Sammamish than it is to the larger King County region. I will add that there are some new FCC regulations that interpret the Cable Act. The Cable Act, I think it's 1984, amended in 1996. And there's a ruling called 621A clarifying the Cable Act. And it sets a limit of franchise fees at 5%. It requires the city to deduct from the payment of franchise fees in in-kind contributions. And it prevents local jurisdictions from regulating the internet provided by a cable provider in addition to enacting any local regulations that are in conflict with federal law. And while that might, may sound like restrictions and not benefits, I think the benefits are generally the same as with any utility franchise regulation of your right-of-way, requiring right-of-way use permits when any work is done in the right-of-way, requiring reports, bonds, insurance, audit, ability to audit books. Without a franchise, arguably you lack a lot of that power. So it's, it's better to, to have something that formalizes the relationship between the parties than to not have an agreement.
Okay. Thank you all.
Okay. Next I have got Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember, we think you're on mute.
There we go. That's better. Sorry about that. Everybody's got to do it at least once. Thanks, Andrew. A couple of questions. Do, do companies like Comcast cover all of the costs that are incurred? Do companies like Comcast cover all of the costs that are incurred on their own? I know you said that we're able to get reimbursement for like administrative fees and inspections, but are there any other costs that the city incurs that they don't pay for?
No, because if there are, if we, that's one reason with the franchise, if the city were to have to do some additional costs, say in regard to capital projects or something like that, there are terms, and there's terms in the agreement that allow the city to seek reimbursement from utilities. That's one thing with the franchise agreement, it really clears out process, takes what we need to do to help the city kind of protect ourselves and protect our assets within the right of way, and also retain the authority we have to manage our right of ways. In regard to a lot of the permits that Comcast does in regard to their work, that they're doing within our right of way, those are the administrative fees we have for first reviewing their plans, coordinating the permit, and then also being out there to follow up with inspections and pay for the hours of our staff that are spending time on these projects.
Excellent. So another question then is, it looks like we've been collecting about $800,000 a year from Comcast. Where does that money go? Like, what do we do with that?
I believe it goes to the general fund in regard to public works for our staff to manage and maintain our right of ways.
Okay. And then my last question is, why would we do an agreement for so long? Like, an initial 10-year period, and then basically it would automatically renew for 25 years? That seems like a really long time to walk into a set of terms, and I'm just curious, why that long, and do we have an option to potentially do one for a shorter period of time where we might have an opportunity down the road to negotiate more favorable terms?
Lisa, you want to answer that one?
Sure. First of all, this area is so highly regulated, it doesn't provide the city with a whole lot of latitude. However, the agreement is written so that, for example, if the prohibition for charging any amount in addition to 5%, if that 5% cap went up to seven or 10 or whatever, we would have the ability to renegotiate to collect that higher amount. So the longer term doesn't necessarily mean we're locked into unfavorable terms. If the law changes, we would still be able to go back and have good faith negotiations. I will say that having negotiated probably a dozen of these in my career, they're usually about this long, primarily for the reason that has just been sort of shown as a exhibit A here. It's taken so long to come to the table, which isn't an excuse, but it is somewhat of an explanation that these are kind of time-consuming to negotiate, so we want to make them last for a little while.
Okay, great, thank you. And one just process question. So we're opening the public hearing tonight, and it will extend to the next meeting, so we're not actually voting on this tonight. Is that correct?
Correct, because there is a state law that requires two readings to adopt a franchise, so this would be your first reading.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I think she might be paused.
She's on pause?
I mean, you hear internet? Yeah.
Uh-oh.
I think she's having a Comcast issue. Can you hear me?
Oh, are you having a Comcast issue?
Yeah, I am, actually. Can you hear me?
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you guys not?
I don't care.
Okay, wonderful. Yeah, Comcast Wi-Fi. You can hear me or you cannot?
No, we can hear you now.
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Okay, good, great. So I'm trying to ascertain how this franchise agreement may or may not assist the city in Sammamish in dealing with right-of-way issues with Comcast. And I point to an example in my Sammamish Fix-It app where I identified a cable, it's a Cat TV cable that has been laying across our sidewalk where people can trip on it since July. Actually, I think it's been there since June. I just ended up reporting it to the My Sammamish Fix-It app in July, and by October, I had it and came over on the city email and emailed our Public Works Director and said, "What is taking so long to move this cable?" And I'm not the only resident who's been complaining about it. So I'm curious if this franchise agreement will assist the city of Sammamish in, you know, getting Comcast to get their wires off of our sidewalk where a resident could potentially trip on them. So liability is true.
All right, do you want me to handle that, Andrew?
Go ahead.
So a couple of things. There are broad notice and opportunity to cure terms in the franchise. So for customer service issues and right-of-way violations, we certainly could invoke some of the terms in the franchise. However, I understand from speaking with Andrew that the more immediate response to the issue has been not to issue right-of-way permits to Comcast expedity while the existing problem of these numerous right-of-way cables being above the ground or laying on the ground or hanging above the ground go unresolved. So that's the immediate way we've been dealing with the problem, and of course, a longer-term issue would be invoking some of the terms of the franchise concerning notice, opportunity to cure, up to default if necessary. I have never seen that happen, but that's why these terms are fairly clear and ambiguous in the event that we need them.
Lisa, do you want to also touch on the performance bond and how we can invoke that if we needed to?
Yeah, they do impose, sorry, Comcast does have a $50,000 performance bond that we could use in the event of an unaddressed problem such as a right-of-way violation. I personally don't have a preference for using a performance bond. I think they're, depending on the bondholder, the guarantor of the bond, they can be difficult to collect on, however, we do have that. I think here in Sammamish, however, we have been able to get the attention of, if not the subcontractor of Comcast, the entity within Comcast is responsible for this, and I know that they've provided some cure date. And I think, Andrew, you might have, I saw the emails, but you might be able to speak to that a little more specifically.
Well, yes, specifically on the two issues that have been mentioned lately, we did provide a list, and as Lisa mentioned, we did put a little pressure on Comcast to address some of the outstanding issues of coming back and cleaning up some of their neighboring properties and low-hanging wires or a wire that's on a sidewalk. We did that by putting a halt on their right-of-way permits until they started concentrating on that work. But I have been making an effort in regard to the two locations that we've been talking about. We did just receive an email from their construction manager that they were both, both of the items on 218th and also Northeast 24th are to be completed by the end of this month. So they had them in contact with their subs, and the pressure has been helping, and it's through, you know, items like in the franchise agreement that allow us to do that. So we do work together, and we have to, we try to put a little pressure on them to get the work done that's needed.
So we don't have a franchise agreement right now, and we're putting pressure on them. So I guess my question is, is how does this franchise agreement expedite that? Because, you know, from my take, a cord and a wire, whatever that it is, laying across our sidewalk from July to the end of October is completely unreasonable.
So this franchise retains some of the authority we have. Obviously, the sooner that we're made aware of it, the better, the sooner we can address it ourselves and as the staff and review the permits. But also, this allows, this agreement allows us to update the insurance requirements and some of the liability issues that we'll need to protect, the city itself can protect ourselves. So in the event we were to obtain or, you know, receive additional costs, then we can then go back and through the document itself, the agreement, we can go and work closer and get reimbursed by Comcast and put more of the liability on them and not the city.
Okay, and that is actually my next question, is who owns that liability in this scenario when Comcast needs a wire laying across our sidewalk for months on end? If a resident were to trip on it and break their arm or something, who's liable? Is it the city because it's in the public right of way, or is it Comcast because they left the cable there?
That's not an uncommon scenario, Deputy Mayor. There are injuries, and unfortunately, sometimes not with respect to this issue, but with respect to municipal liability generally, where there are property, is property or personal damage from obstruction of right-of-way. And in a case like that, first of all, the city's insurance pool would defend and our reservation of rights, and Comcast is a necessary third party and point to that entity for liability indemnification.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, next I have got, is this Terry Davis?
Well, Terry Davis is the Comcast rep, Mayor.
It said that he wanted to give a little bit more history.
I think we already had that happen. That was a little earlier.
Okay, okay.
I can mention on the deputy mayor's comment, and I just want to apologize on behalf of Comcast, you know, we will make sure that those are taken care of. We will also make sure that we're adjusting our processes to identify those for emergency, and then working with Andrew in the Public Works Department faster to get them resolved so that they're not a public safety. So on behalf of Comcast, please accept my apology, and we will get it resolved asap.
Okay, council, did we have any other questions? Okay, I am not seeing any. Okay, and we will be leaving then. We have no callers, so we'll be leaving this open then through November 2nd, correct?
Correct. Okay.
Okay, so we will be leaving the hearing for this evening, and we'll be, but it will stay open, and we will come back to it on November 2nd. Then the next thing on our agenda, and I want to thank everybody.
Thank you.
On board for that, okay. Okay, next up is what we moved around here, is number 16. Okay, so this is where we moved up our discussion on House Bill 1590. And again, we are thrilled to death that we have got Councilmember Kathy Lambert in house. So we are going to, Mr. Sugg, would you please give us the intro on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There has been a lot of information about this topic over email, so I'll just provide a quick summary here. Essentially, there was a bill passed during the 2020 legislative session that allows counties or cities to councilmanically impose a 0.1% sales tax for affordable housing. The county had until September 30th to implement the tax before cities gained the ability, and the county eventually approved it on October 13th. The 0.1% sales tax is estimated to generate about $700,000 per year for Sammamish, and the bill requires the county spend at least 30% of that, which is about $210,000 within Sammamish. At this point, it is not clear how the county will deploy the funding back into our community. House Bill 1590 does require that the county, quote, "consult with the city before constructing any facilities in Sammamish," but it does not include any detail beyond requiring this consultation. The county has drafted an ordinance regarding the development of an implementation plan for the funding, which appears as though it will include information on this consultation process, so it may take some time for those details to be fleshed out. We are hopeful that the county will engage with cities as they're developing this implementation plan, and as the mayor mentioned, and in addition to myself, we have a few folks who can help with questions on this topic, including Councilmember Lambert, our lobbyist Luke Esser, and our Director of Community Development, David Pyle. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Great. Luke, I saw that you are on the line here as well. Maybe you can, ah, hi, maybe you can give us an update from Olympia on this?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Mike did a good job of explaining the legislation, which was first enacted, I believe, in 2015 to allow for this local option affordable housing and behavioral health services tax to be adopted by vote of the people only. And then earlier this year, legislation was passed, House Bill 1590, that allowed councilmanic approval by cities and counties of this same tax, and also included for the first time this provision about, for cities of 50,000 population or more in King County only, the requirement that 30% of the sales taxes raised in that city be spent in that city. There are, I know King County is looking at possible further modifications because the law as present does not allow, would not allow them to purchase existing affordable housing stock from private property owners, and they would like to do that. That is one idea that's being kicked around, but that's kind of the lay of the land on that legislation.
Excellent, thank you. And then I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Lambert. Maybe you can give us some insight on what's happening down at the county.
Thank you. Well, two pieces of information. First, I think you have an amazing lobbyist who used to be my seatmate in Olympia, and we spent many, many hours together. So I was just enjoying watching him work in front of me instead of next to me where he was my seatmate. I also, if you don't mind, wanted to tell you, earlier, Councilmember Ritchie asked for information on, so he could be prepared, on Charter Amendment 6. And if you go on the King County website, under the Committee of the Whole, on July 14th, 2020, and I think it's the bottom one on the agenda, 2020-0231, and it has a nonpartisan evaluation, so you can get everything you need to know in that one place, and that will be very helpful. Totally nonpartisan, and then you can look in the ballot, the ballot pamphlet. So both your employee as well as Luke Esser did a great job. What I will tell you is that, in fact, the county did not pass it before the September 30th deadline to do so, which gave opportunities for other cities to pass it. And so that several other cities in our area, it was Snoqualmie North Bend and Issaquah, so that they too would get a portion of the money collected in their cities, even though they were below the 50,000 population threshold. We did not change anything from the state law except for one very big detail, very big detail. State law allows you to go up to 60% of average median income, but the county decided they wanted it below 30%, so that the most needy people would be the first to get the funds. So we will be focusing on 30% below. And the reason for that, and I'm going to read just a paragraph out of this letter that is from Representative Cooter to Speaker Jenkins, and basically, they're saying that they're talking about, first of all, this bill that is now codified, if somebody wants to read it, it's RCW 82.14.530, and it talks about who is disproportionately burdened with housing and healthcare costs. And so they said that Hispanic or Latino people of any race are 24% housing burdened, whites that are not Hispanic are 8%, blacks alone are 42%, and Asian alone not Hispanic is 8%. So you can see that there's quite a range in where people are housing burdened, and so they wanted to be able to get the money into the most burdened the most quickly. The other thing is that the question came, so also, they want to be able to bond, 50% of the money that is raised may be bonded because it has a good bonding resource because it is this sales tax. King County just today was told that we will continue with our AAA credit rating with stable resources. We were concerned that because of COVID- We were concerned that because of COVID, they might downgrade us on, on a watch list. But they said today, no, that our business principles are very solid and prudent. And so they are not putting us on the watch list. They are saying that we are a stable source. And that is important because it keeps our bonding interest rates lower, as, as all of you know, which saves us literally over the 30 years, hundreds of millions of dollars. So Senator Cooter, I'm sorry, Representative Cooter sent the information to Speaker Jenkins, and I have the letter here if you'd like a copy. And then she also sent it to Senator Billing, who said that he will try to take it to the floor and as timely a process as possible. So this will go now to the Regional Policy Committee. The Regional Policy Committee is scheduled to meet on November the 11th. However, that is a holiday, so that will not be happening. So it will be at the meeting after the budget in December. So it will come before the regional policy. So one of the questions was, will the cities have input? Absolutely, you will have input. One of the questions that is going to be before the legislature that Representative Rue and, and Cooter and others are bringing forward is can you buy existing buildings? Because right now, it's very inexpensive to buy on interest rates existing buildings. And my initial concern was by buying hotels, where are the tourists going to come when the COVID is over? We did look at 200 hotels, and in the qualifications, there were not many. I think there were four that made the qualifications. So we are not going to be buying every hotel in town. There's very strong criteria as to what they are looking for. So I wanted you to know that. Another question that came up was ADUs. Can you build an ADU? That is part of the decision-making that will happen as coming out of the RPC Regional Policy Committee. But again, it will still be under the 30%. So those are the details, and we have not done anything yet. We will be waiting for RPC to have a proposal to come to the council, and then we will go from there. So it's clearly in midair, but we know that we're going to go forward. And the, one comment has been made by some of the people in Seattle that some of the cities have taken their money away. Well, it's nobody's money, and nobody had any money to start with, so you can't take away anything that they didn't have. So that is not an accurate statement. Issaquah put in their language that should a, that should some other things happen, that they would give back their share. Two other cities have said, if you bring projects out to our area, we, we will consider partnering with you. So it's not a matter of we're taking ours and going home. It's like, we want you to treat us fairly. Therefore, we have some skin in the game, and you have to treat us fairly, and then we'll share back. But we don't always think that out here gets shared with nicely. So it was, I think, a good political move for some of those cities to do so because that helps in the negotiating. But I think everybody realizes how serious this is, and I'm glad that there will also be health wraparound services as part of this. And as the Chair of Housing and Community Services, we definitely need to be working with making sure that we have the availability of services. It is a very serious situation right now with the amount of beds that we are losing. And we just lost 26 more beds. We lost some foster care beds, and this morning I was in a meeting, and there are more beds that we're going to be losing. So we definitely need to have money to buy the beds back that we have lost. So that's what it's all about.
Okay, well, I'm going to start with a question that I had, which is, could we use the money, if we've got the teen shelter that's, that's down here? Could we use the money for providing a social worker to be at the teen shelter?
That is a definite possibility, and when the language gets written, you need to work on making sure that gets into the language.
Okay. And then, so that would work the same thing with, if we were to do that with Hope or with Hope Link or with, you know, anybody else, okay? Okay, we've got a bunch of questions here. Let me go to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Hopefully, like, Comcast is working.
Well, it's a little touch and go.
Why don't you put it in the chat, and she can read it to me?
Oh, yeah, why don't you put it into the chat, and then I can read it to her?
Actually, it's not working. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me okay right now?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Oh, we could.
Can you hear me okay right now? Okay, great, I'm going to call it again. And that is, I guess, I lost. I'm hearing.
We lost you, we lost you.
Okay. All right, I'm going to try to call in. Put me back in the queue when I'm back on.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to wait for her to call back in here?
She said she's okay being put back in the queue.
Okay, so let's go to the next question, which is Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, Mayor, I had a question based on your comment. How would providing a counselor help with affordable housing?
Well, one of the things that you can use the money for is for mental health.
Right, I guess we have, well, I mean, it's certainly an option, but given the, sorry, maybe you guys commute because there's an echo. But given what Councilmember Lambert raised, which is that there's a desperate shortage of beds and housing, I would hope that if we are raising additional funds, that we would use that, that we would use those funds for actual housing and beds to help people who don't have shelter. We certainly have other funds available to provide more mental health counseling if needed. But I think with COVID, and Councilmember Lambert, maybe you can speak to this, but I believe that the housing crisis is becoming more acute. So in addition to a doubling of people being in a situation where they're needing food assistance, we're also seeing an increase of people being, needing assistance with either shelter or with rental assistance.
Okay, well, I was thinking on the lines of if we have kids that are using the teen shelter or the domestic violence shelters or anything else, the object would be for them to have counseling and have help to move them through the system so that we are getting the beds and having them move through the system, so we are having them through the system, opening up those beds. So that was my thought process, and I think that's the county's thought process. So that's where I was going with that. I don't think with 211K, we're going to do much besides provide sidewalks, but, so I think we would have to definitely partner with somebody. Is Kristi back on the line?
I'm sorry, I had some questions to Councilmember Lambert.
All right.
If she could answer those, that would be great.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
No, I already asked them about how the, the COVID situation is making the housing crisis even more acute and that we need to be, you know, finding a way to contribute whatever funds we have to increasing the number of places for people to shelter. If she could give us some statistics on that, that would be helpful.
So we definitely need more beds, but when we have people in beds, we have to give them the wraparound services that will allow them to be able to stay in those beds and then to move on. So one of the successes that we've had, much begun in Seattle with my dear friend Doug Hobson, is housing first. And we have found in many of our hotels that we've been putting people in during COVID that people who were very much in need of services, mental health services, that once they were stabilized and we had places where we could make sure they were taking their medications, whatever they needed, their mental health improved dramatically. So it is a balance of getting somebody in a house and then giving them the wraparound services that they need so that they can stay housed. It doesn't do anybody any good for people to go in and out of different beds and not be able to, to get to a safe and stable place so that they can be in a more permanent housing, whatever housing that would be. So I think it's a combination of both, getting the beds and then helping them to be able to stay in whatever bed is going to be appropriate for them in the long term.
Right, I guess I'm just looking at the fact that we still have, what, a million? Million and a half in CARES funding that we could certainly apply to providing some of those additional services. So again, I'd like to see on the long term, finding a way to put this towards maybe some of the more structural pieces of beds and housing units and being able to utilize some of these other funds, like the CARES funding, to provide those additional wraparound services. So maybe we could do both. I like the idea of, of helping people in both ways, so thanks.
Well, you remember that.
I also, oh, I wanted, oh, sorry, one, one more comment. I know we've had a little bit of discussion on ADUs. I, I guess one of my questions, and maybe this is to staff, is I'm not sure I see ADUs helping anybody with affordable housing in Sammamish. For one, I think we have few lots that are big enough to build ADUs on. And I'd be curious to find out, for any of the ADUs that have been built, are people in these situations, right, at 30% AMI or 60% AMI, actually using these? Are most ADUs being used for family members?
I know from being on the board for the seniors that a lot of seniors live in ADUs.
Right, so, but again, are there, are those people that are qualifying in these, you know, 30 or 60% of AMI? And again, I'm not saying we shouldn't help our seniors, but I think that that's really more of a, a family issue, and are we really addressing the affordable housing crisis here?
So one of the fastest.
I don't know if there's anyone from staff who can answer that.
Mayor and counsel, nobody's equipped to answer that question because the criteria has not existed until it was brought up this evening. We can try and take a look and see if we have any information, but I'm not optimistic.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, in answering the question, the CARES money has to be spent by December 30th, not December 31st?
Oh, no, we found a way out of that.
You did, well, I'm glad to hear that. We, we haven't been told by the federal government yet that we can go beyond, but in the briefing that the county was given this morning, we were given the status of each of our accounts to see how we are doing to be on track to make sure that we are able to fully utilize all the CARES money that we have brought in, including the new allocation of funds that were recalculated as of March 1st, to be sure that we have it all spent for our citizens and not having to send it back.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor, are you back on?
Thank you, I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so I, my questions for Councilmember Lambert are relative to, so Sammamish obviously did not initiate the tax prior to the county, and we've had some discussions about the potential for ILAs. So if the percentage that has to be spent in the city of Sammamish works out to, you know, what was it, $210,000 a year? I mean, obviously, that's not going to build much of anything. And I think I heard the breakdown on a per-bed basis was about $200,000. So our $200,000 that is going to, has to be spent here is not going to build a whole lot, nor will $700,000 for that matter. And so the idea behind an ILA would be partnering with other municipalities and pooling funds for projects that might be initiated. For example, the city of Bellevue, building a homeless shelter. And if we entered into an ILA with the county so that we could pool money with jurisdictions. But I guess my question for you is relative to that potential in partnering with the county on an ILA. And then if that is a viable option, so that we have a seat at the table to give some direction on how our taxpayers' money is going to be utilized for this purpose. But then also, if it's viable, I think our council should be giving direction to our city manager to make sure that city staff is getting involved and is, you know, quickly going to the county and engaging in conversation relative to that so that we can have our voice heard at that table, what we want done, and how we might actually make an impact. Because our portion is small enough, based on sales tax revenue, that we're not going to do a lot on our own, but we can if we pool with other jurisdictions.
So that was a idea that was talked about in the council. Unfortunately, it did not pass as an amendment to say that little cities could partner on their own to do exactly what you said and do it separately. But it didn't pass. So you, you as a city can always have an interlocal agreement with another city. But I think that that is something that, again, when we start making the decisions on this, this is a wonderful idea to bring up at RPC, to have your city manager talk with other city managers about trying to get that into the language as it goes forward. But we will have several months of negotiating, and so you'll have plenty of time for RPC. And I know that you're on SCA as part of the PIC, by the way, doing a great job. And so I think PIC will probably also weigh in, and RPC will weigh in, city managers, city councils. So there'll be plenty of input, and I think these are all great ideas to be able to start sharing what, what can we do to be creative and talented and get our best bang for the buck as partners in solving some of these problems.
Yeah, because, and Kathy, one more question. Because the county kind of altered what the legislature had set at its sights on as far as that 0.60% of AMI, and the county has really kind of looked more at the, at the homeless level, at least initially, for the funds. If, if the requirement that 30% of it is spent in Sammamish, I guess this is partially a question for our city manager. Are we in a position with our, you know, housing strategy and our land use to be able to support something like that? And over what period of time would be, would the city be required to, you know, build something just based on our, the funds? You know, we don't have much unless the county's just going to pull funds itself and say, we're going to put something in Sammamish. I feel like we're kind of still prepared to execute on our end.
We had the same problem when we are talking about flood projects, when some of the smaller cities only get a small amount of money, and then they have to wait to pool it or, or partner with other people. So again, I think it's another model where we just have to make sure the language is very clear that you want to partner. And as that language comes forth, if you have any questions or you don't like something that's coming in, let me know. And, but I think it's going to go through RPC, and that will be an excellent place for all these discussions to come up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we start with round two, is there anybody else from the council that has not spoken in round one? Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So Kathy, I thought I heard you say that one of the changes that you, that was made was that this money could be used to purchase housing, not just have to build new units. Isn't that correct?
That is the intention, but that is the reason for going back to Olympia, to get the underlying legislation to be changed to allow that. At this point, it doesn't allow that, but that is what the intent of the executive in the council is. So they're going to go back, and it looks like from the letter that we have pretty good support, but we'll have to see how that ends up in Olympia.
Okay, because I'm wondering if, a couple of things. One, maybe we should be adding that as something we just. One, maybe we should be adding that as something we discuss for our legislative priorities to support that. Two, is this money that's generated, you know, the intention is to spend it in San Amish, is that something where we could then partner with, say, Arch and provide that money to Arch because they have a much better way of leveraging these funds and leveraging existing housing units and things like that? So is that something that we could also explore where it isn't us trying to just build new units, but find something that's out there that could be turned into affordable housing or leverage existing programs?
As the mayor said, yes, you can partner with anybody that you'd like to partner with. But again, I think making sure you cement that in the RPC language that'll come to the council will make it even more clear.
Great. Excellent. And then the last point I'll just make is that there's one obvious area if we have somewhat limited funds, which is to reach out. We do have the Town Center where there are already planned affordable housing units, and we could potentially try to add on in that area, which would be a place where there's already some plans to build some housing, there's already plans for affordable housing units, and that might be the best place, again, to make the money go the farthest and build the most housing units, affordable housing units. So I think we do have some options here, even with some limited funds. And, you know, given the crisis and given the situation, we may, you know, as a council, decide that we could actually chip in a little bit more money to make it more meaningful and to really help some folks here. I think that the Habitat for Humanity community has been incredibly successful, and we should look at how we partner with groups like that where you make your money go the farthest. Looks like Councilmember Trane's trying to talk. I think you're on mute there, Councilmember Trane.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Stewart, that was a really good point there on the Habitat for Humanities, hoping that we could definitely help with closing that wealth gap by providing actual homes for homeless people or in the city would be awesome. So I'm with you on that one.
Yeah, I would agree, and I think we would have much more luck, you know, hitting the line on that one than we would on what's coming in Town Center because those prices, we would be paying a bundle to try to do something with the prices that are coming to Town Center to make them anything affordable. So I had a question on the money. The money that's coming in, is there any sort of timeframe on it for how many? If we had it, could we, is there, do you have to use it in one year? Do you have to use it in two years? Is it something that we can accumulate for a period of time so that it comes to an amount of money that is actually something that we could use to do something?
So, really good questions, and I wanted to comment just for a second on the affordable housing issue that you brought up with Habitat. I think that is a huge public policy and a very important public policy. We used to be at 80% home ownership in this county, and we are now down at 40. That is awful. So I think it's a goal to start trying to get it back up, and there's a group meeting to try to figure some of that out. And we have been at 1.7 months of supply of housing in this county for a very long time, but then about three or four months ago, they rated us at 1.1 month on the Case-Shiller Index of housing availability, and in one of the categories, we have zero inventory. So it's two things. It's trying to get the home ownership back up again and enough inventory that people have a place to live. And we're still having huge numbers of people bidding on the same house, which doesn't help keeping the prices down. So I appreciate you commenting on that. Yes, we have, as I mentioned with the Flood Control District, sometimes on grants, you don't get enough to really do that much with, and so then we are able to accumulate. I don't think that the people want a lot of accumulating in this. They want to be buying as quickly as possible. But, you know, you can always do an agreement, and one of the things we've been talking about is a role model, but it hasn't happened yet in the Flood District, is being able to say to a city, you don't have anything big enough here, but this city over here has a project. Could we borrow from your pot of money and be able to do sort of like an inter-fund balance transfer? So that's the kind of thing that could be written into the ILA, and I think it's a really good idea so that we get as much out as quickly as possible and as much housing online as possible.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Councilmember Lambert?
If not, I would like to say I had a lot of fun being with you here tonight, and I am going to go home and write two speeches and do a video presentation. So I will be up late, but thank you very much. This was fun. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay. And it looks like we are going to have to extend our meeting. So I need a motion to extend.
Councilmember Trane will make the motion. He loves it when we extend the meetings. I move that we extend to, what do you think we need, Mayor? Half an hour or an hour?
Oh, probably an hour.
I move that we extend to 11:00.
Do I hear a second? Okay. I think that was Christie. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. That would be a 5-2. Let's hope that we are done by 11:00. Try to control our chatter. Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next thing that we moved was number, okay, so the next thing we moved was number 14. And so Pam, I'm going to have you take that since that was the one that you had asked to have moved.
Yeah, I just wanted to get, to be able to provide to the public a quick update as well as understanding how these changes will be sort of managed up and down if we continue to see a rise in the COVID numbers. So I just know there's been a lot of community concern and input on the reopening of our parks and facilities.
Councilmember Stewart, this is Anjali. So we are, based on the governor's guidelines, we could have technically opened up the amenities that we are now opening. We could have opened them up a lot earlier, but the governor had made it clear that local jurisdictions had the ability to make decisions based on their specific local situations. And knowing that our docks, the skate park and the playgrounds get really busy in the summer, we kept them closed. Now that it has cooled off considerably, we are opening them up, and unless we witness that they are getting overcrowded, we aren't planning to monitor the, like, we are currently in a high-risk category of the number of cases, 100,000. So this is based on the fact that we don't expect any crowding to occur at these amenities. And around us, I believe we are the last city to open up. Issaquah and King County had kept their playgrounds and amenities open for most of the summer, and in the last month, we know that other neighbors, Redmond, Kirkland, Bellevue, and the Issaquah, and, sorry, the Lake Washington School District have also opened up their playgrounds. So we would just be consistent with our neighbors.
Excellent. Is there anything else that remains closed, what will still be closed to the public at this point?
Our spray park, which we typically close down at the end of summer, and all drinking fountains.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you. I just want to make sure that that kind of got out there for anybody watching because we know there's been a lot of interest in this. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we need to have a motion then to have that passed?
I move that we pass the revised Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan, COVID Plans.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. 7-0. Okay. Next, we have unfinished business. We've got the small business and nonprofit grants, round two. And that would be Mr. Sugg.
Good evening once again. Mike Sugg, senior management analyst, joined on the phone by Christina Morgan, who is our contract support, helping out with our grant programs. On October 6th, the council discussed the second round of grant funding for businesses and nonprofits impacted by COVID-19. During that meeting, the subcommittee conveyed their recommendations for approving upon the first round of grants. The council had some additional questions, so they directed the committee to perform further review and come back at their next regular meeting. And so the committee met a third time and refined their recommendations in two key ways. The first being that they added a recommendation on the total program budget and a method for distributing the funding. And the second key change was an update to the program's schedule in order to provide more time for promotion and submission of applications. So I'm just going to pull up a few slides here really quickly while I speak. Let me share my screen with the go-to meeting. So the subcommittee's recommendation on minimum eligibility criteria has not changed since the last time this was presented, except to remove the criteria that a grantee from the first round can't receive funding in the second round, which we will address on the next slide. Regarding the funding question, the subcommittee is recommending $400,000 in total program budget to be distributed, as shown here. So first-time applicants would receive priority, up to $10,000 per applicant, which is the same as the first round. Any funds remaining after that would be distributed to both new and returning applicants, up to $5,000 per applicant. If there is no or limited funding remaining for these additional $5,000 grants, the council may consider adding additional funding or running a lottery. And this methodology, which I need to give credit to Councilmember Ross for suggesting, would equalize the grant awards between rounds one and rounds two. So all grantees, whether they're new or returning, would be eligible for anywhere between $1,000 and $15,000 in funding, depending on the need and availability. These funds will be available to reimburse eligible expenditures incurred between March 1st and November 30th. Approved grantees will be required to submit a complete and signed accounting form showing proof of eligible expenditures before any funds are distributed. And just here on slide three, the committee wanted to give plenty of time for the applications to be submitted, so the schedule was revised, as shown. The schedule gives applicants four weeks in order to, gives them four weeks to submit their applications, and then we would come back at the council's last meeting of the year on December 15th to approve the distribution. And so that's all for my short introduction, and I will turn it back over to the mayor and maybe any other members of the subcommittee who want to provide some context to the recommendation. Thank you.
So who on the subcommittee was going to speak?
I was just suggesting that maybe they would like to provide some additional information. So we had the deputy mayor and councilmembers Ross and Stewart on the subcommittee.
Okay. Well, let's start with the deputy mayor. Did you want to, did you have anything you wanted to say regarding the grant proposal?
Sure. Yeah. I think, you know, we tried to stick initially to council's direction, which originally, and it can be marked by council at will, but originally council direction was we were recasting the net for those businesses that were not captured on the first round of grants. And so that's kind of initially how we set out. We strayed maybe a bit from that when we got direction last week, and council wanted to add in previous recipients of grants. But we were, the committee was conscientious about making sure that this grant cycle, round two, that we are asking for their impact, the documented impact for businesses, so that we're mindful of giving funds to businesses that truly do need it. And we talked about kind of changing the parameters slightly so that, you know, businesses that had already received one can come back and ask for more, but they cannot get more than $5,000. And then those that are getting a grant for the first time can go up to 15, just assuming that they can provide documentation that would support that. I do think it's also an opportunity for us to kind of, you know, potentially ask businesses for the magnitude of their impact, which I think might help guide us either in this grant funding round or potentially a subsequent grant funding round, because I still don't think we have a good sense from San Amish businesses about the impact that they felt. And I think, you know, it may be different from one segment to the next. Like, you know, restaurants are likely different than, you know, other brick-and-mortar-type businesses. And I think it is possible that restaurants could be hit differently come these winter months because now the seating outside will not be supportive as it was in the summer. So I think by asking for documentation on impact, it will certainly give us some inside information that might help shape either this round or subsequent rounds. And I will turn it over to one of my fellow committee members to fill in any voids there.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. I just wanted to ask Mike, when we met, we were talking about the, trying to align the dates, and I noticed that the expenses have to be incurred through November 30, but we still cut off the application coming in on November 29. So we might just need to address with some sort of a footnote in the application how people can reconcile that, because you, the committee didn't want any estimates, but that would sort of require people then to all apply at the very end of the period. So maybe I'll address some of that with some instructions in the application, I'm not sure. But I also wanted to point out that one of the things we worked on here was to really allow a lot more time. So we have, you know, about two weeks roughly to promote this in a number of different ways, and I'm still hoping that we will send out not just emails, but send things out by mail as well. And then we have a four-week application program so that people have time to learn about it and get their applications in so that people don't miss out simply because they didn't hear about it in time or didn't have time to get all their paperwork in a row. And I think to Deputy Mayor's point, from the previous round, if you are coming back to apply for more, you do have to, from the previous round, prove that you had impact and spent the first round of money before you can get a second round. So again, trying to equalize this so that people who, you know, applied the first round don't necessarily have an advantage over people who are coming in this time who maybe didn't know about it the first time.
Councilmember Ross?
Yeah. All well said by council, deputy mayor, and Councilmember Stewart. I just want to add a couple items to that is, a lot of people are referring back to the fact that we made this money available with less restrictions, mostly timing, and dispersing it from operating funds. Timing is the only element that we are extending. We're still following the CARES Act funding guidelines because it's been brought to us loud and clear that we want to give these to people that are of need, and we define that as a CARES Act criteria. That's a first. The second is, it's been touched upon, but before checks are issued this round, there's going to, we need to get the certified impact for all dollars impacting our businesses or not-for-profits before we issue those checks. So that, that's for both prior applicants and new first-time applicants. So any monies that are dispersed this time will be certified before, so we make sure that we are tracking the impact. And to Council Mayor, Deputy Mayor Maltzow's point is, I think we have a limit- And to Council Mayor, Deputy Mayor Maltz House's point is, I think we have a limit up to $15,000, but I would encourage in our instructions that we don't have a limit or ceiling on what they put on their impact form certification, so that if we make some, maybe a third round or even the second round if funds are available, consider additional funds for those businesses that are more seriously harmed. So that's some of my input.
Okay, thank you guys for all the work that you put in on this. Councilmember Gamlin, did you have?
Yeah, just a quick question. On the, has round one been fully dispersed?
It has been, except for, I believe, three or four applications, yes, it has been fully dispersed.
Okay, so people actually have checks?
Correct.
Excellent, okay. One thing we may want to consider on round two is the tax situation for these businesses, that if at all possible, possibly getting it out in 2020 to them may be beneficial. And just to keep in mind, you know, every day is, I know we want to give plenty of time for people to apply, but at the same time, we're looking at folks looking to pay their bills, businesses looking to have that money to survive. So we're trying to do some balancing act between giving people enough time to apply and getting the money out there soon enough so we don't lose any businesses, or more businesses than we need to. So we should need to keep that in mind.
Okay, I have a couple of just comments, observations, maybe perhaps as a business owner who just got money through the system in Redmond. I'm disappointed that we don't have a different category for storefronts. I think the storefronts are, should be treated differently from the standpoint that their costs are going to be much greater. I don't care whether it's a restaurant or a store, or, I don't care what it is, but your storefronts are going to take in more costs. Their rent is going to be much higher. Most of them are not going to, are still not up to full hours, they're not able to have as many people in their store. Even the paint store is not able to have as many people in their stores. So I mean, their, and their hours are not the same as they used to have. So, but they're still, you know, given regency, they're still paying their rent, and it's high. So I'm disappointed that, because that is, and those storefronts are the reason that we're looking at our businesses. They are the very essence of the, they serve the residents that live here. They are, when people see them closed or harmed in some way, that is the reflection of our business community. They are the reason we are here to help. So I'm very much disappointed that we, I don't see, and I'm frustrated at the fact that I'm not seeing a separate category for them, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing this $15,000. Some of them are paying that in rent for one month. So I'm a little, I'm a little frustrated from that standpoint. And then there was, I read through the application, and I know that, I know this was added last time, but I'm, I'm just going to make a comment, because I know we're chess players on this council, and we want to make sure nobody gets ahead if we don't, you know, if we don't have to, and we have to play checkmate. But what we put in there was to make sure that, you know, nobody who's related to anybody who works on the council, or works for the city, or is related to anybody at the city, or, you know, borrowed milk from somebody who worked at the city, is able to apply for one of these grants. And honestly, that's not fair. This is not a situation where a business did something wrong. This is not a situation where this was a business plan gone bad. This is not a situation where this was a business where anything had to do with anything humanly related. This was a natural disaster. This was something that a human could not control. So to me, to try to fault that in any way is wrong. It's just wrong. And I don't understand why that's being done. So those are my two comments. Councilmember Ross, you're in the queue?
I think I'm in there.
Yeah, see.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, you're up before me.
So relative to storefronts, that wasn't a charge we were given from the council, so it wasn't something we had discussed in committee.
Mayor, this is Andrew Stevens, emergency manager. You know, part of this too was the, you know, they think the guidance was aimed at small businesses particularly, where that would eliminate some of your larger storefronts. But also going to Councilmember Ross's point, where I think it'd be very important for, to show impact, and to show that impact, if you do have it, far beyond maybe the money available, because, you know, as a policy decision, if you get $1.5 million in impact shown through a few businesses, nothing's stopping this council from distributing those funds, or going beyond, or pushing for greater legislation at a county or state or federal level to continue to support that. So, you know, some of the, you know, limits on employees, some of the, you know, I think showing impact does not necessarily have to be a loss of revenue, but if you have a, you know, a governor order saying that you had to close your business down to 25%, that's a very demonstratable impact. So it's very easy for you to look at that application and say, well, yeah, you can only fill a quarter of your seats, you know, here's your grant. Okay. I think Mike's working, he's going to check out some technical issues here.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash. To enable audio controls, please enter your.
Have to extend the meeting again.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, there you go, there you are.
I think we only have three councilmembers though.
I think Jason's still here, and Chris, and you and me, and now I see Karen.
Jason, are you there?
Oh, yeah, enjoying the conversation.
Okay, council?
Okay. Do you have everybody back at City Hall, Karen? Oh, can't hear you now, Karen. Thank you. Can anyone hear Karen?
She doesn't have her microphone on right now.
Uh huh, okay, I just, I see her listening, so I thought she was talking to us.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Yay! Okay.
Do you have Ken and Ken on?
I have what?
We can't see them.
Okay.
All right, we got Ken.
Okay.
All right, can I go?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, okay. I'll start at the top. First, when the committee met, we weren't charged with relative to anything but storefronts. So that's why it wasn't a discussion, but I think we need to be careful when we lump all of the storefronts together. I had a conversation with one of our storefronts, and I was talking to the owner of that business, and I asked, "How's it going?" And he said, "We're so busy." And then I tried to make an appointment two doors up from that same business, here in Samanish. I can't get an appointment, because they're also very busy. So I think when we say storefronts, we have to delineate, you know, one business from another. And I think to Councilmember Ross's point, when we ask for the magnitude of impact, we'll get to see it, and this council has the ability to adjust things if there is something glaring, and a consultant can maybe kind of look for a pattern for us and identify something. I mean, maybe it's, you know, restaurant-specific, and it isn't storefronts as a whole, but I think, you know, if we ask for businesses who are applying for a grant, to give us the magnitude, the full magnitude of their impact, that will allow us to make better educated decisions, either for this grant round or a subsequent round. And then relative to, you know, those of us who are sitting on the council that are business owners, who could, you know, I think, Mayor, you were saying, you know, it's not those businesses' fault, and certainly I agree with you on that front, but I would say, I know there's, I think, at least two of us, maybe three, maybe four, that are business owners here in Samanish, and I think it would be imperative for us to recuse ourselves from any vote on that subject matter. And I will, I will identify myself right now as a business owner in Samanish, so I would have to recuse myself from that vote.
But I'm talking not just about, the way it's written is, you can't work for the city, you can't be related to somebody who works for the city or anything else. So it's, it's not just the council, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's your daughter if she owned a business, couldn't apply for a grant, which is silly.
Well, I'm just saying, as, you know, if there's a relationship, then I think it would be best to recuse ourselves from voting.
Okay, I'm going back to the chat box. Who else has got a, whoops, hang on. Okay, I've lost anything that was in there previous, so I'm going to go to, is there anybody else who's got? Any comments?
Councilmember Ross did, I think.
Okay, Councilmember Ross?
If someone has the other comments, I took some notes, and maybe we'll try to bring this to closure tonight. First of all, Mr. Gamlin's comment regarding taxation into 2020, get the funds out in 2020, I think the schedule in front of us supports that, would you agree, Councilmember Gamlin? The schedule leads to that, we'll get, we'll get the distribution likely within a few days of our council meeting.
Yeah, we had a December 15th date, I don't know how quickly we can get those funds out, but it was just an observation that'd be great if we could act on.
Yeah, so maybe to go back when Mike finalizes, he can check with finance, make sure checks are cut to meet that objective, and if we have to tweak the schedule, we may have to slightly, but we can give that direction. The second, the second point is regarding storefronts. I think it is a good point that not all storefronts are created equal, some are doing very well, some are not. In so much as we're asking them to put forward their impacts from COVID, if it exceeds, well, up to $15,000 right now, maybe, should I, I would like to maybe, maybe make a suggestion to help with the spirit of what Mayor Moran has suggested, for storefronts, their maximum could be $25,000, not $15,000. And if they can justify up to $25,000 in impact, then that would be their maximum, and then all non-storefront businesses would be the program drafted here. Is there any comments or thoughts on that?
I've got one, Chris.
Yeah.
I don't think that we should delineate need based on whether you have brick-and-mortar or not. I think the numbers will tell us if you have a need, and I think it should be dictated based on need, not whether or not you're brick-and-mortar, or operating some other kind of business that's not brick-and-mortar.
Okay, so perhaps similar to the last bullet of the recommendation is, if funds are exhausted, or we determine there's greater need than $15,000 for certain businesses, the council may consider additional dispersment above the $15,000. That would balance what you're, you just mentioned, Chrissy, would you agree? That might be the best way.
Yeah, I think, I think it's hard to say whether or not we're going to go above $15,000, because, you know, our recommendation was $400,000 total, and we, of course, can revisit that, but I think what we really need is data, and if we ask businesses, "Please tell us what your impact is," not just up to $15,000, but just tell us what your impact is, then we will have data that will support either adjusting whatever the Phase 2 is that we're doing, or potential Phase 3. So I think as long as we're gathering the data, that will help the council execute grants that will fill needs.
If I may, on that point, I think we need to be careful about trying to do a sliding scale based on a particular business's need, because we haven't really built any of the process around that, and we certainly didn't do that in round one. And I, it's not that I don't appreciate the sentiment, I just think we need to be careful. The idea of this is to get money out there to help everyone. I don't think that we think that $10,000 or $15,000 is necessarily going to be all a business needs. We do believe that this will help, but there are going to be other places that businesses are going to need to go and get assistance. I appreciate that people who have, you know, whether it be childcare centers, or preschools, or, you know, there are all sorts of physical businesses that have physical locations here in the city that may have additional challenges, and I certainly want to make sure we help them. We just didn't consider that at all throughout this process. We have nothing in place that says, "If your need is greater than this other person's need, we will adjust how much we give you." We just need you to prove that you have a need of greater than $10,000 or greater than $15,000 before we will grant you that much. And so if we were going to go do that, I feel like we have to go back and really adjust the whole process, and I don't think we want to do that from a time perspective.
I think it should go back to committee, because I think they should be reviewing this from that standpoint.
Well, I don't think the committee will get any better of an answer than what we're discussing here. What I would put is to add a 2B, and if the data demonstrates needs in excess of $15,000, the council may consider additional dispersment. Just leave it at that, that's the framework that we can work with. We can let the data talk to us. I don't think we'll come up with anything more clever going back to committee, we've already gone back one.
Okay, Councilmember Train?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the grant application and direct the staff to proceed with the grant process as written.
Second.
Any more, we still have Chrissy in the queue?
No, I'm happy to just go with the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay, I'm a very loud nay. Okay, next up, we have got...
Mayor, if I may, we have a lot left on our agenda, and I know we typically don't like to change the agenda midstream, but do we want to take a look at what's left and what we realistically think we can get through tonight?
Okay, I'm being told November 2nd is jammed as well, so keeping that in mind. What time is it? You know what, we have 20 minutes, so you guys, let's keep this and let's move it fast. Okay, first thing up, we've got the approval of ordinance amending 20.05.040 of the Sammish municipal code to require disclosures of names and addresses of all land use applicant members, including all individuals who hold transferable interests in the applicant or its members providing first variability, and establish an effective date, 02-02-513.
Again, Mayor, if I may, I feel like we have some things that are time-sensitive, like our legislative agenda items. Could we rearrange those and do those first?
Let's get going on this, there's more time than we have. So Lisa, can you speak to this?
Sure, this was something that was raised by the previous council in 2019, but was not ever deliberated upon. We brought it back at the interest of some of you wishing to see it again. This ordinance does exactly what it says that it does. It requires applicants, you know, land use applications to disclose transferable interests in LLCs or other corporate entities, and I will stop there and see if there's any questions.
I'd love that we push this out to a date certain and come back to it. We have other really time-critical items we need to get to, and I don't see any urgency in getting this done.
Okay, well, do you have a second on that? Let's vote on it and get it over with.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay, so let's move it. Okay, so...
No.
Not move it off the agenda, but let's get going on it. Okay, so who's got comments that I'm going to put into the chat box? If you have comments to... Oh, come on. All right, so first comment in, I have got, oh, first comment in, I believe I have. Everybody's coming in here.
I'm Jason, I'm in county.
Okay, I believe it's, Jason?
Thank you. So there was an email that came in that caught my attention because it brought up an interesting point from Master Builders. So, and not to paraphrase, but I think the point that I'm reading in this is that they have, and I'll try to paraphrase it, and if I mess it up, then I guess I'll get yelled at, but I'm trying to understand how we can know who the vested partners or the, I'm sorry, what's the language, the individuals who hold transferable trusts in the applicant or its members. So I would imagine that there are some larger developers that we deal with, that work with our city, that have investors or essentially they own part of the development through an investment or some sort of ownership, in a corporate ownership stake. Is this speaking to that? Do they need to disclose all of the owners of a stock in ABC Development Company? That's how it reads to me, but if that's not accurate, I don't know. I'll figure it out.
Lisa, did you want to answer to that question?
Sure, that was raised in the MBAC's letter, and there is a response to that letter that was sent by the city manager later this afternoon. If you haven't had an opportunity to look at, you might want to do that. That issue could be addressed by having the applicant simply supply a link. Most corporation websites contain information regarding investors, even when those investment lists are large, and that could be one way to solicit this information. I went to a bunch of different corporate websites this afternoon. Those interests are usually disclosed.
So interest being ownership stakes or interest being, I mean, I'm thinking like, how far into this do we go, right? I mean, I guess if there's some pension fund or some group of people or a retirement group, or, I don't know, I mean, how far into this are we going to go as far as trying to name names? I get the rationale behind it. I'm not judging it up or down yet. I'm just trying to figure out, at some point, if somebody does not provide the layer or the depth or the, you know, how far down are we going to go into an ownership stake if somebody owns 1/10 of a share of ABC Company through a fraction of a stock, they do have a transferable right in that company, in part ownership in the development, right? So, I mean, I didn't know, to answer your question, I did not read the email, and I'm not sure I should be doing that while I'm on the dais, but I saw the email from the Master Builders. I did not see the reply, but I guess I'm trying to, if we don't know, we don't know, but I would hope that we can kind of sort that out before we vote on this.
I think that's a question for you to decide. I'm not sure I can provide you with a level of detail answer that you're looking for. I think that's for you to ponder.
No, I appreciate that. I'm pondering. I appreciate that. Thank you. I guess my question overwhelmingly is, if the intent is to try, if the intent of the legislation or the ordinance here is to try to figure out who owns a company and who owns a development company, I understand the rationale behind that. I'm concerned that we're exposing people's private, you know, information, or not necessarily their, I don't know that it's public or private, but I think that we're trying to answer a question that we may be able to get through other means. And if we said the top 10 membership, the top, you know, top 20% or whoever owns a certain chunk, that might be a little bit more informative of who we're trying to figure out owns these development stakes in our city. And again, I appreciate that we're trying to figure out who those people are and people, the corporate veil is the real thing. I mean, I deal with it in what I do, so I'm not opposed to trying to pierce it. I guess I'm trying to figure out, is the goal here to try to get everybody's name exposed and create this huge list or by stating, "Here are the groups of people that are in there," and it's up to the individuals that are trying to find that information and dig that out to say, "Here are the groups of people or the pensions or the organizations that are the majority shareholders." Do we want to be more specific, which is what I'm hoping? And, you know, my initial inclination is to say we should try to get information but not try to clog the system with just an overabundance of details that get down to such a level of granularity that it becomes kind of, it's not productive at a certain point, right? So that's my concern. So I would hope that we can kind of take a look at this, maybe with a different lens that doesn't necessarily include a level of specificity and granularity so as to cause, frankly, to make it burdensome for anybody to try to submit information and to provide a lot of individual details and names of people that would be frankly not helpful to us, I don't think, in my opinion, in terms of trying to figure out who these people are that own maybe a fractional share in a company. So if this is how it is, and this is how it's written, and I'm getting the impression from our city attorney that that's what it is, then it seems to me that this is a big ask and frankly, a whole ton of information, 99% of which I don't think we're going to ever need or want to deal with. But, you know, it's a conversation for another day after we figure out what it actually is we're looking for. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Train.
So my question is for David Pyle. So on applications, currently, what's required for an application when addressing this issue of ownership and other individuals who might hold transferable interest in that application?
So it's really, all we really are concerned with is who owns the property, and that's typically achieved through a title report. We really don't have, just speaking honestly, have much use for this information. Our code currently only requires that the applicant indicate that they either own or control the property that they are applying for a permit on, and that was even a recent addition that was, I believe it was a Tom Hornish addition that was made a couple of years ago, primarily as it related to the trail, just to make sure that we understood ownership and that somebody can't propose to develop someone else's property that they haven't shown that they control or own. And that's a reasonable expectation. You know, we really don't have a need in our code, as far as I'm aware, to understand exactly who owns shares in a company. If the company is the company that owns the property and is applying for a permit, that is where we, that is the level of detail that we would leave it at. It doesn't change how setbacks apply or how, you know, building heights apply and those kind of things apply for our purpose. So if there's another purpose at work, you know, it's just not part of our review process, if you will.
Right, I think, I mean, I think the idea here is just that we want to know who's building in the city, right? Who are we working with?
It's Eric.
Council, if both of you haven't had an opportunity to look at the email that was sent by the city manager later this afternoon, the MBAC's points are, some of them are well put, and one of them is whether or not there's a penalty associated with failure to disclose or disclose all of the transferable interests in a corporation, and the answer to that is no. If there is a list of 20 things that are required to fulfill a completeness determination and one of those 20 things is not there, then the application would not be complete and it would be returned to the applicant. If subsequent to a completeness determination, it was determined that the information is inaccurate, we would simply go back and ask for the information to be fulfilled so we could continue to process the application. I think it's important to note that even with respect to property ownership, community development doesn't undertake an investigation as to the accuracy of the representations in the application unless it has for some reason, reason to believe that it's not accurate. And I think this would be, it fairly enough treated that way as well. We wouldn't go down a rabbit hole looking for whether all 100 of the 100 ownership identities were, I mean, it's just not possible for us to do that, and we're not legally required to. I think it really is in your court to decide if this is something that you want and you would find useful. I think from our perspective, we can't really provide you with a good reason to have it other than to just, for transparency with the public. I would add also that, yeah, publicly traded companies have public financial statements that can be reviewed as well. So with a publicly traded company, this would be information that presumably any citizen would be able to obtain.
Okay, next they have Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I have two questions. One, my first question is, it's not clear to me what problem we're trying to solve here. Can someone explain to me what problem we're trying to solve with this? I'm just not a fan of passing legislation that, you know, will create more paperwork and more things that get tracked and more things to follow up on. If it's not clear to me what problem we're solving, right? This is just legislation for the sake of legislation.
Well, I think this one's kind of obvious from the standpoint that this is a transparency issue.
Well, transparency and how? Like, they already have to list a company that owns it, so transparency in that, like, for instance, I mean, this doesn't apply to personal things, but basically, like, what if, you know, I, my parents, for example, owned a business at some point, and they had a limited liability corporation that they set up. So what if they wanted to buy a house under that, and, you know, my sisters and I were all part of that? So you're saying that when they go to buy a house, that they'd have to disclose all of our names as part of that purchase? Like, to what end? Like, transparency for the sake of transparency, like, now we're just disclosing a bunch of people's names and addresses. What problem are we trying to solve? What problem exists by not having this list of information?
Is this a rhetorical question, Councilmember Stewart?
No, it is not rhetorical.
Right, would you like input from the other council members, or are you still speaking?
I am asking a legitimate question. I have no idea why we are passing this legislation because I'm not sure what problem we're trying to solve.
Do you want other council members to speak now or wait until you speak?
That is at the discretion of the mayor. That is up to the discretion of the mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gamblin. You're next, anyway.
I'm next, anyway. So...
Well, I have two questions, so once he's done, I have another question. Go ahead.
So, one thing I've heard over the years, it's mainly sitting in the audience of council meetings, is how we've been put forward as working with developers as the city is partnering with these folks. We're working with them, we're partnering with them to achieve what we're doing. Well, if I partner with somebody, I want to know who I'm partnering with. I want to know who's influencing the decisions. I want to know who has a financial interest, who has something to gain, who has something to lose, if I'm going to partner with somebody. So in the interest of transparency, if we have these developments going on, I'd like to have an idea, and I think it's a perfectly reasonable request, to say, who's involved and who stands to financially profit from this development going forward? Does somebody who stands to financially profit possibly have some ability to influence the outcome of the decision, whether this development goes forward or not? I think the residents of the city have a reasonable expectation, when their city is being impacted in different ways by development, they have a right to know who stands to benefit from that. How is this decision being made? What influences are being brought forward and who possibly can bring those influences forward? What this does is this gives us a clear view by just having the developer say, "Here are the people who are going to be financially benefiting from this. Here's their names, here's who they are. That can be looked at, and we can make a determination. Is everything on the up and up and as it should be in the development?" So it's a perfectly reasonable request, it's not a lot of work, and it certainly will give us a level of transparency that we can feel sure that our partners, so to speak, are people we'd like to be partnering with, or at least we should be aware of who they are when we're getting into this. So I support this legislation. I think it's a wonderful idea, and we should do this.
So that leads me to my second question. Thank you, Councilmember Gamblin, and this one would be directed to you, Lisa, which is, so Councilmember Gamblin is implying that we would take this information and we would somehow use it to potentially make a determination if we would issue a permit to someone, and that feels like a very slippery slope.
That's not what I said. I said, "I'd like to know."
Well, you said that we need to know who they are.
"I'd like to know who they are." I didn't say we could not issue a permit. That would be a separate determination.
You said that we need to know. You said we need to know who we're partnering with. So I'm asking Lisa a question, that if we have this information and we would potentially use it for some sort of...
Hold up, hold up.
I have a question to the lawyer.
There was a point of order. Just give her a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Can I state my point?
Yes, make your point, please.
We have a conversation going on, and council meetings are not supposed to be conversational. The mayor is going to directly be speaking. We have two council members going at it, so...
I just want to ask a question to the lawyer. Is that okay?
Yes, I heard your question, Councilmember.
Yes, state your question.
Would you like me to restate that, Mayor?
Lisa, do you have the question that Councilmember Stewart was trying to ask?
Yeah, I interpreted Councilmember Gamblin's question differently, I believe. I believe I heard his question as, or rather, his statement, if you will, as a transparency regarding members of corporation, when that member and members of the corporation are land use applicants, it's useful information for the public. It is not the basis for denial of an application, it's not a basis for making a determination that the application is not complete, unless for some reason it's obvious that it's not complete. You can go to wind and... You can go to Wyndham and see that there are four owners of the Wyndham Corporation. Therefore, if Wyndham applied for a land use permitted in the city of San Amish Washington to school to only one owner, that would be fairly easy, an easy error to identify.
That's not actually the question I asked, if I may restate my question. So we're collecting this information and now we have this information. And if, if someone who made an application felt that the application process was somehow different because of the names on that application, would that not open the city up to some additional liability because we have this information? Whether or not we actually used it that way or not, because it feels like this is information that other people tend to not ask and especially because we're asking for people's addresses, it just feels like we're collecting information that if we have no intention of using it as part of the process, then I don't know that we need it. And if we are going to collect it and it could influence the process, could that then open us up to illegal liability?
I don't see that the legal liability for that question is any different than any of the other application questions.
Okay. So if people perceive that because somebody's name is on there that has a prior history with a council member or something else, that there won't open it up to say, well, because you collected this information, you've treated this differently? I just want to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to anything.
Councilmember Stewart, I think that is not the, that's not the intent. I did not hear that intent behind any of the questions. I did not hear that the information would be used to deny an application or to condition an application.
Okay. I just, I heard the comment that said, we, we need to know who we're partnering with and we need to know who they are and what their backgrounds are. So that made me feel like that opens us up to some sort of weird thing. My final question is, by asking for people's addresses, is that going to be a privacy issue? Like, once that's on there, that's a matter of public record. Is that a privacy issue?
If there's a Public Record Act request, we would apply exemptions to the request, to the response, just as we would any other. We don't supply email addresses, phone numbers. I believe addresses may be treated differently under the PRA.
Okay. That would be something I'd like to understand because aren't, aren't applications, public records altogether, like, aren't they out there for the public? Or is that, is there an opportunity for that information to be redacted?
Again, without going into great detail about the redactions and exemptions and reduction laws required under the PRA, it's kind of difficult to answer that question in a vacuum or a hypothetical. And we go through a process with each Public Record Act request and we apply redactions and exemptions based on the specific case that we're dealing with. So it's hard, impossible for me to say, yes, addresses would always be redacted.
Okay. I'd just like to get a little bit, I appreciate that and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just want to get a better understanding because for, for that person who has, you know, invested in their, you know, my parents invest in my company and now suddenly their address is disclosed and somebody's unhappy with the development, I just don't, I just want to make sure we're not, again, disclosing information and putting anyone in any kind of risk when it's information that we're not necessarily going to use to make any decisions.
Counsel, we need to extend.
I'll move to extend to 11:30.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to extend to 11:30. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
What happened, Ken?
I know, he made the motion. What's up with that?
Let's get this shit done. Come on.
That would be a 5-2. Okay. We're extended to 11:30.
There's nobody in the queue. I'd like to offer an amendment.
There's no motion.
I don't think we have a motion on the floor yet. We do have Ken Gamblin still in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion that the council adopts ordinance number 02020-XXX, an ordinance of the city of San Amish, Washington, amending section 20 dot 05 dot 040 of the San Amish municipal code to require disclosure of names and addresses of all the land use applicant members.
Okay. Now we have a motion. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now I'm looking for any comment. And I think that was Councilmember Ritchie. I have you first.
Yeah. Oh, cool. Thank you. So I appreciate the intent of the motion or the ordinance or all of it. I'd like to find a way to support it. To me, it's very broadly drawn and I would like to offer an amendment to limit it to, I'll just say that the top 50%, the top 50% owners, just to pick a number, the top 50% of owners of the applicant company or companies in the development so as to minimize those that are, you know, minority or fractional shareholders in the company.
I'll second that so it gets to discussion.
Okay. Discussion.
May I speak to my motion briefly?
Yes.
Very, very briefly, recognizing the time. I appreciate that we're trying to do something here to disclose people's information about the applicants or the developers that are building in the city. I support that idea. What I'm trying to figure out is the amount of granularity that we're trying to get at. And I think if we draw too broadly here, we're going to overwhelm the process here when we're actually trying to get some specific names and specific information, determine if there's a conflict of interest and to determine if there's something nefarious going on. And I appreciate that. And I want to be a part of that solution. I think it is a problem and I do want to try to figure out how to deal with it. So having said that, I think drawing such a broad scope, a broad brush, is going to really gum up the works of development applications to a level of, I don't know, almost impossibility in some circumstances as I see it. Now, I don't, I don't think that's the intent. I think we're trying to figure out who the applicants are or trying to figure out if they have a conflict. To gather information without a process attached to it that has the goal or the intent of trying to sort through that information, let's just taking a whole bunch of data and not have any way of sorting through it, to me, it seems like a huge waste of time and a huge burden on applicants and a huge burden on, on the city, just on our, on our people, on our staff. So by limiting it to a chunk, whether it's the top 50%, top 10%, whatever it is, I think that achieves our goal of trying to get some specific names of some people rather than having them hide behind ABC Development Company. And I think that is a problem and I want to try to figure out how to deal with that. But the amount of information we would get by drawing this broad brush, to me, seems overly burdensome. So I don't support the motion as it stands now, but I would propose or support some level of incremental to figure out how this works. Again, I'm, I'm an incremental. Let's figure out what, let's try something. If that doesn't get us what we need, let's revisit it. But to just go for a home run right away and hope for the best, I think that has a lot of drawbacks, especially in terms of the bureaucracy being overburdened. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gamblin?
So speaking of the amendment, thanks for the idea, for that amendment. What I see is an issue on the amendment, if we, if we look at a, at a development that has a $20 million net profit, if somebody owns 1% of that and they just made $200,000, that's a lot of money. So if we're going to do this, let's put it forward that we find out who stands to have a financial benefit if it turns out that it's a bigger problem than I think it is, which I don't think it is. We can always come back and look at that. But right now, I think the intent of the ordinance is clear. It makes good sense, so I wouldn't support the amendment.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? So the amendment on the floor. Jason, can you repeat your amendment?
Yeah, I'm just going to go ahead and withdraw it just in the interest of time. Thank you.
Okay. So let's go back to the original amendment on the floor. A motion on the floor. Sorry. It's good. The original motion on the floor and that was put out by Councilmember Gamblin. Could you repeat your motion?
Doesn't have his mic on.
Thank you, Kristi. I motion that we adopt the ordinance then from, that's in front of us, ordinance number Do I need to read the whole thing again, Madam Mayor?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. And it was seconded by Councilmember Trine. Unless there's anywhere discussion, we're going to call for the vote. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. And it is a 5-2. Okay. Let's move on to solid waste recycling Republic Services.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Jeff Elikish, Public Works Director, Mayor, City Council Members and City Manager. Before you deny for consideration is a discussion on two possible rate increase requests from Republic Services for Waste Management Services in the city of San Amish. This includes a CPI or Consumer Price Index rate increase of approximately 30 cents on average. The other proposed item is related to a state legislature action related to the passage of a BNO tax adjustment that may result in a rate increase of approximately 7 cents. Combined, those add up to 37 cents. Of note, on April 1st, 2020, the Washington State Legislature raised the BNO tax on certain service industries, including the solid waste industry, from 1.5% to 1.75% for the purposes of a workforce education investment surcharge. These two items are generally covered in the system contract with one caveat, which will be discussed during the presentation. We anticipate bringing back a resolution for City Council consideration on November 2nd, where by direction is provided from the City Council through the City Mayor on how to proceed with these two items. Tonight, we have City Attorney Lisa Marshall will discuss the contract-related issues and language provisions. We also have available from Republic Services for Q and A, General Manager Kent Krollenberg. Lisa?
Thank you, Jeff. So the solid waste contract that we have with Republic is section 4341, a provision for additional state or local taxes. And in that section, it states that any revenue generated from that additional tax over, over $5,000 shall result in good faith negotiations between Republic and the city as to whether and how to implement the additional amount over $5,000. Here, the increase from the existing BNO rate at 1.5 to 1.75% will result in about $21,000 each year, which is obviously above the $5,000. And so the contract is silent as to who is responsible for negotiating on behalf of the city. So what we propose to do is bring back a resolution next week that, in which you would direct the city, the city manager or his designate to negotiate with Republic as to whether and how to implement the BNO tax over the $5,000. The second rate increase is CPI and that's dealt within 4.31% and that's automatic. It does not require any good faith negotiations between the parties. It's done by Republic providing notice to its customers on November 15th of the date in which the increase will be imposed. And in this case, both BNO rate increase and the CPI will be imposed January 1st of 2021. So what we propose to do next week, excuse me, on November 2nd, is bring forward a resolution which simply says, the city manager or his designate shall enter good faith negotiations with Republic for the rate increase as to the BNO tax and how and whether to impose the amount over $5,000. And I know that's kind of a lot of detail, so I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions for Lisa? Councilmember Stewart?
Are we deciding something tonight? Yeah. Are we deciding anything tonight or we're just getting something back on the second? Sorry, it's late.
This is just a discussion item and I know it's a little bit confusing. Our apologies for that. The way that I think is, it was contemplated that we would just have this as a discussion item tonight, introduce the topic to you and then return on the second with a resolution. You might even put it on consent that states that you're, yeah.
Are we needing to provide any direction or, again, this is just to kind of introduce this to us?
It's kind of to introduce it to you.
Okay. I'm sorry. I guess I'll leave the floor now.
Okay. So Lisa, if I'm reading this right, this is going to be a increase to the residents, what, the two of them, of approximately 43 cents?
Yeah.
It would be 37 cents, Mayor, in total.
Oh, 47 cents?
One adds up to 30. One adds up to 30, the other, 30 cents, the other is 7 cents.
Yes.
Total of 37 cents.
Oh, that's, numbers change. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
Yeah, just to make sure I understood the narrative that was just here.
Yes. Sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Ross.
Want me to back?
Yes. Finish.
Since the notice, case 1020, it notices before 11:15 on the CPI adjustment, that's automatic, no further action on that part, the 30 cents.
Correct. There's no further action required on the CPI increase.
So that's, that's been triggered and does not require any action on the council. Okay. So the only action the council is regarding the good faith negotiations on the BNO pass through.
Correct. And it's really just a safety measure because the contract really doesn't say exactly how that negotiation occurs. So we just simply like acknowledgement from the council by way of a resolution that the city manager is authorized to do that.
Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor, are you there?
He looks frozen.
Yes. Sorry. I just haven't got a turn on getting them. Can you hear me or not?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm going to try and switch devices here and then just, I'm going to try and, okay, I'm off the other device. It doesn't seem to work. I tried. I do have some questions here, Lisa, because what you're telling us differs from our agenda bill. Our agenda bill says action on it and it says to approve the requested rate increases. So I guess I'm a little confused on the pivot here to doing something. And I don't want to put this on consent because I think it's worth talking about. You know, I, I understand that we're talking literally pennies here, but, you know, I think it's worth having a discussion about whether or not what the legislature has imposed a BNO on them should get passed on to our taxpayers and the consumers ultimately, our residents and our city. So I don't think this is a consent item, in my opinion.
Yeah. Apologies here because there were a lot of cooks in the kitchen on this one, so I misspoke. You're correct. The agenda bill does say action. So the item under consideration is whether to direct the city manager to discuss with Republic whether or how to impose the amount over $5,000. That's what the contract language states.
Okay. So my question is, are we opening up, opening up the ILA in order to do this?
No.
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 No, or excuse me, not the ILA, excuse me, the contract?
No.
Okay. Generally speaking, I'm not favorable to passing on the BNO tax to our residents. So, even if it's pennies.
Okay, next I have got, let's see, who do I have? Jason, Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this a time-sensitive issue, city manager, city attorney? When is this action item applicable in terms of when do we need to give you direction to take action on this? Is there a deadline that's out there?
There isn't a deadline in the contract, but any increase would be effective on the first of the year, so we'd have to have a response, your direction from by that time.
Okay. I would be... Sorry, go ahead. My apologies.
Just so that we're all on the same page, the contract language says if new city, county, or Washington State taxes or fees are imposed, or the rates of existing taxes are changed after the execution of this contract, and the impact of these changes results in an increase or decrease contractor costs in excess of $5,000 annually, the contractor in the city shall enter into good faith negotiations to determine whether compensation adjustments are appropriate for the amount exceeding the $5,000 threshold, and if so, to determine the amount and method of adjustment.
Okay, thank you for that. So to understand, you're, the motion that's being discussed or the direction that you're seeking is to essentially ask, have the council direct the city manager to do that? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion, and I'd like to add an amendment that he report back to us by, before our final meeting of the year so that we can take action on it. Is that...
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
And that is, Republic desires to have the rates go into effect January 1. They're looking for 45 days prior to that to have this, you know, the decision made so they can be noticing, which would mean they would want to have a decision by middle of November.
Okay. Then I will amend my amendment to ask that the city manager do what he can to try to have the conversation or the negotiations per the contract as directed by council and report back to the council on or before November 2nd. I guess that's our next meeting, if feasible. I will add, can I just add one piece here? I don't think this has anything to do with us. I think that the city manager domain completely. I think this is him instituting a contract. I don't know why we're discussing this at all. We're not building policy here. I mean, either the city manager negotiates, or he doesn't.
Except I'd move it to the 10th, so...
So be it.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
And I agree with you, Jason, that we just need to give the city manager direction to go be able to do his job, because it sounds like contractually, we don't have a choice.
Right.
Okay, so motion on the floor, there's a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in...
Yeah, I...
Oh, I don't...
Sorry, I can't get to the chat fast enough. So I want to understand what our city manager is going to be negotiating. Is he going to be negotiating to implement the BNO tax and charge our residents? Is that the direction that, Jason's motion is not clear to me?
My motion is to have the city manager, let me start saying this, Deputy Mayor. My initial inclination in reading this and probably part of the conversation is that none of this is necessary as far as council input is concerned. Having said that, it's on the agenda, we have to discuss it. I don't understand why, if it's part of the contract, that he's not doing it anyway. We're talking about, you know, if it's in excess of $50,000, then I understand that he would come back and speak to us about it, or there's a certain threshold of comfortability. I don't know. I'm happy to have that conversation and to set a date where he reports back. But the terms of the contract are, if there's a BNO pass-through, that he's gonna negotiate and the city and the vendor will negotiate in good faith. I mean, that to me is pretty clear language. He needs to go ahead and do that. If time allotted between now and the 45-day, you know, window that the vendor is asking for, then so be it. And then he reports back to us, here's what we came up with, here's what we're gonna do. And if that calls for City Council action from us, if we take action on the diet, let's do that. But I don't, you know, I don't necessarily know that we need to be a part of it unless we are told we need to be a part of it. I haven't heard how or why we need to be a part of it at all. But I would like some feedback from the city manager at some point to determine what happened.
Okay, I'll give you that feedback now, if I'm allowed.
Sure, absolutely.
Lisa explained in the beginning that the contract is silent as to the role, responsibility, and the authority of the city manager. And absent that direct authority on this particular issue, we both felt that we needed to bring it back and get direction from the council. So that's what the intent of this item is on the agenda, because it is silent as to what's done here. It gives you the parameters that anything over $5,000 shall be negotiated in good faith. Doesn't say whether you're gonna sit down with the person or the city manager or designee. So just wanted to clear that up.
To the city manager's point, the definition of city in the contract, and mind you, I did not negotiate or draft this contract. This is pre-existing. The word city means the city of Semamish, King County, Washington. It's used in the contract. Use of the term city, they include reference to the mayor or his or her designated representative.
Well, I appreciate that, and I can only imagine it's gotta be the city manager. If you need direction from us, my motion stands. Please report back to us by the 10th, if it's feasible. If not, that's fine. But, you know, we have to move forward. We have to try to get this done, and you're the person to do it as city manager. So that's my motion.
And Pam, you're second?
I still second it, yes. We should authorize the city manager to go negotiate, or the city to be compliant with the contract, for sure.
Comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, off you go. Okay, let's move on. We only have two things left, guys, and I really hate to say this, but tick-tock, I'm getting the, getting the move. Okay, you guys. Oh, come on. It is, we're gonna have to extend, Kent?
I make a motion that we extend the meeting till midnight.
Oh, my God.
Second?
All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Not your place to do that, Scott, be the mayor, man.
All in favor, say aye.
My students are gonna hate me tomorrow.
Yeah, my husband's gonna hate me tonight. Okay.
Let's vote, people, before we have to get out of here.
Opposed? All right, let's...
Nay.
All right, so you guys, next thing up is our 2021 state legislative priorities. Mr. Sugg.
Move the table.
He's holding his breath, and I think we have...
Poor Luke.
Poor Luke is, oh, Luke is here. Nope, okay, let's do this.
All righty. Good evening, once again, Mike Sugg, Senior Management Analyst, joined by Luke Esser, the city's contract lobbyist. And tonight, we are here to begin the discussion on the council's desired priorities for the upcoming 2021 state legislative session, which will begin on January 11th. There are three exhibits included in your packet this evening. Exhibit one is a list of some potential legislative priority ideas for the council to consider. Exhibit two is the city's 2020 priorities, and exhibit three is a memo, excuse me, a memo from our lobbyists. So we will start this item by having Luke summarize the memo and what we might expect for the legislative session next year, and then we can kick off our discussion on the priorities. Luke, are you ready to start us off?
I am, yes. Thank you, Mike, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, Luke Esser, contract lobbyist for the city of Semamish. And very briefly, we're coming up on what is the long session, the 105-day session of the Washington State Legislature in January. It will be unprecedented for the state legislature in terms of dealing what you, as municipal governments, have been dealing with for the last seven or eight months, in that a lot of the legislative session will be conducted virtually, which has the major implication that it probably reduces by at least half the capacity of the legislature to pass a policy bills. So there's gonna be even more of a premium on prioritization and trying to get an early start for any policy-related bills. Now, of course, the legislature has to pass its budgets, otherwise the state government's programs and facilities will come to a grinding halt at the end of the next biennium on June 30th. So there will absolutely be an operating budget, a capital budget, and a transportation budget. And I have noted in our memo, Nick and I noted, the AWC has already adopted their legislative priorities for the year, and that the five major priority areas are state shared revenues, a transportation revenue package, fiscal flexibility for cities to spend existing revenues without quite as many constraints as currently exist under state law, housing instability assistance, especially in regards to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and statewide policing reforms. And with, I know it's late, so with that brief introduction, I'm happy to discuss any of the items in the potential 2021 legislative priorities document, or answer any other questions that the council might have.
Mayor, if I may, just have a...
Mr. Sugg?
So I'm gonna pull up exhibit one here on the screen, so we're all looking at the list of potential priorities that we've assembled. And I just want to note that this list is not exhaustive, and it's only intended as a place to start the discussion. So in the past, as Luke mentioned in his memo, we focused, we developed a list of focused priorities built around a few key themes. And recently, during the past couple legislative sessions, the city of Semamish's priorities have been centered around transportation, fish passage culverts, and transit. And our legislators get hit with a lot of requests from many different jurisdictions, groups, and other organizations, so keeping our request concise and focused on the city's needs, as we have in the past, may lead to better outcomes. So just quickly, looking at exhibit one, what we've concluded here are, we have a transportation bucket, which includes the two SR202 projects that we prioritized for the 2020 session, which were a result of WashDOT study on that corridor. Other potential asks in this bucket include funding for Sahali, as well as Isquafal City Road Phase 2. And just noting on Phase 2 that this summer, staff and the mayor met with Senator Mullet to discuss Phase 1, and Mr. Mullet said that if we made a request for Phase 2, he would support it. He did originally help us attain the $5 million grant for Phase 1 back in, I believe it was 2015. So that's the transportation bucket. Then we have the transit bucket, which includes the Metro Monopoly lifted priorities from past years relating to employer shuttles. And in addition, we have a request for increased transit service that we asked for for a couple years as well. We have a stormwater bucket, and in the past few years, we've been requesting money for fish passage culvert projects, both for E-Bright and George Davis. And both of those fun, both of those projects currently have enough funding, so there's no recommendation for fish passage culvert funding in this list here. As a potential alternative, as we heard from Mary Wichter, we've included Lewis Thompson Tight Line project, which will have beneficial effects on the salmon habitat in Zakuus Creek. And this would go along with our theme in the past of supporting the Lake Semamish Cockney. And then our last bucket here is just for other priorities. These likely won't be our main priorities, but a selection could be included on the backside of the one-pager, as we've done in the past. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, and please feel free to suggest other ideas not contained here. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, first question is Deputy Mayor.
So I'm certainly supportive of asks surrounding the 202 in general, intersection work and other, and otherwise. On the transit piece, I think we should continue on with the, our Metro Monopoly lifted thing. It's something we've had there for several years, and if we expect to get traction on it at some point in time, I think we need to continue to hammer on that. Relative to stormwater, one of the bullets there is inaccurate, and I think it's an important one to highlight. It's the last one, so additionally, this project would also address flooding from the Tamarack neighborhood and non-motorized improvements to the Thompson. So the flooding in Tamarack is not going to be solved by the tight line. In an email that Cheryl Paxton sent to me on August 18th, the city council's included on that, it does say specifically, however drainage complaints within Tamarack would not be solved, as the runoff from Tamarack would be collected at the point where it reaches Lewis Thompson and not before. So I think just to set expectations appropriately for council and our residents, we're not solving internal problems to Tamarack. Those are private roads, and we have yet to even discuss or determine, you know, percentage of public versus private benefit by doing anything up there. So this is specific to Lewis Thompson Tight Line, which does not deal with the other part of that problem. So I just, I thought that was important to highlight, just to make sure we're clear. I think on the other things, those are fine, kind of to be the backside, like the Public Works Trust Fund. Those are all very AWC and SCA-esque things that we have there. And I think typically, what we've said is that we support the AWC and SCA legislative priorities, just to be concise, because of course, the more we throw on our legislative priorities, the harder it is to sell it to our legislators, so. That would be all.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, this is a question for Luke. Luke, what are the odds of us getting any funding for any road projects, given that we do not have an approved tip, and we don't have any funding towards, at least on the 202 Sahali, anything that really addresses this?
I will confess, I'm not, I remember dealing with a little bit, hearing a little bit about the tip issue earlier this year, and I have lost track of the tip adoption deadline for the council. To me, the important thing is to have the ducks lined up by the time of the legislative session next year, because this is going to be a very important year to have transportation projects ready for consideration, because there's a lot of discussion about a new revenue package. And that only occurs every five to 10 years or so at the state level. The last one, as was mentioned, was 2015, was the last new revenue package. What that usually means is a gas tax increase at the state. Now, there's a lot of discussions this time around about should there be other forms of revenue considered, whether it be a vehicle miles traveled, or road usage charge, or a car tax, or fee, or something related to carbon. I'm certain gas tax will remain part of it, but bottom line, in terms of the priorities for the city, it's a good year to have these projects there, because there is a, they're certainly going, there's no guarantee, but there's gonna be a lot of discussions about a new revenue package in the upcoming session of the legislature.
So when you, that's very helpful. So when you talk about having our ducks in a row, I think it's great that we can list out some priorities that we have, but it feels like maybe we have some more work to do on our side, that just saying, for example, for the first one, right, the 202 and Sahali intersection, which is definitely important to our city, if we don't have any corresponding work that would help improve the traffic flow as well, does that, do you think that that has a big impact on whether or not this is going to be considered? Or maybe I can ask the question differently. What else do we have to do to help get these into this once every five-year package?
The next step, I think, you know, after, you know, and it's all based on the priorities that you set as the council, and the next step would be for Nick and I, with your assistance, getting the support of local legislators. And I think, you know, for the SR202 projects, those are all in the 45th Legislative District, so those will be kind of our go-to legislative delegation, whereas depending on where in the city we're talking about, the 41st District delegation or the 5th District delegation might be our go-to people. Now, in general, folks are supportive, even if it's just a little bit on the other side of a boundary line. But... But in general, those who are most invested are those whom have constituents and whose district includes the project. So I think your, your relationships with, with the state legislative delegation will be that next important step of the process.
Okay, all right. And I guess when we have those conversations, maybe then we can get more information on what they might be looking for from us to be able to get these funded, because definitely, if these, if this is sort of a once-in-a-five-year package, we don't want to miss that opportunity, for sure.
Nope, we don't want to miss that train.
No. I would like to also add that there are a number of legislative priorities that the K4C has put out that kind of tie into some of these priorities. So there is one talking about supporting a comprehensive strategy for reducing transportation-related greenhouse gases, but also talks about flexibility for municipalities and local governments on how to spend revenues that may be generated from things like a road usage charge. There's also discussions about particular bills in relating to carbon standards, and one of the ones that I saw was, sorry, I'll come back to it. I guess my question would just be, is there any support from the rest of the council to add some of these environmental priorities, since we did sign on and renew our commitment to the K4C? Would we could put one or two of their priorities on here to elevate those as well, when they overlap with some of our other priorities, particularly when it comes to environmental protections and some of these transportation areas? So would the council be interested if I went, I included, we included the link here, but I'd be happy to go through and pick off, you know, two or three.
Maybe we can just add a line, councilmember, maybe we can just add a line in there that says that we support K4C, or something like that.
Okay.
I think we'd want, we'd want to, I would want to look at them first, before we just roll them all on there.
Okay. I'm just trying to be mindful of time here, because we've got a, we've got a line up here, and we've got another topic here.
I understand that, but I think this is a really important topic, right? Our legislative priorities are, you know, I mean, and that's fine. Christie, there's a, in the packet, if you want to look at those. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, or we can reach out to King County directly, but.
And Mike said he was gonna take a look at it, too. Okay, so, and I had a question for you on this, Luke. 202, that is a state road, that's a state project, and I think our goal was to get it added to the state work program?
Ideally, yes. We, we have talked in the past about, you know, if, if we don't have a big revenue package, could our local legislators find some way to get it inserted? Because it's not, it's not big money, but by the standards of the huge roads projects that we, we get around here, that can sometimes cost billions of dollars, but ideally, it'd be great to have this as part of the state's program.
Right.
If they are gonna do one of the big, huge, multi-billion-dollar, new transportation revenue packages.
Exactly, yeah, because this wasn't really having to do with, with, you know, our 228th or anything. This was a state project that we were hoping to get onto their work project, or their work program. Okay, looking at the Q box, next I have got councilmember Ross.
Okay, I'll be real quick. The list looks pretty good. I would emphasize what Deputy Mayor mentioned is the Metro Monopoly. I want to carry that forward again, keep pushing that. With respect to K4C, if councilmember Stewart, if you can send us some potential project ideas or line items that may fit into our legislative priorities, so we can look at them, and then when, next time we meet, we can talk about it.
Sure, and the link to the whole list is in the packet, but I'll pick out a few key ones.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And councilmember Ross, I will, I will note in regards to the Metro Monopoly, I think there's a very strong argument to be made. We do need, I'm gonna need the help of you and the other councilmembers in locating a new champion. The prior sponsor of that bill was Senator Guy Paloma, who retired from the legislature late, last year, about a year ago. So we need, we need someone to step forward and grab that baton and, and run for us. So I think you might be on mute, sir.
The K4C is already listed on last year's flyer, so just for everybody to know that. Okay, so the next person up is councilmember Richie.
Thank you. It's been my experience, Luke, correct me if I'm wrong, we gotta keep it very simple, three on one page, and on the back of the page, three Simamish-specific issues, where it would help Simamish specifically, that are Simamish, even within our city boundaries or very close to our city boundaries, specific asks, specific financial asks, and to me, you know, a watershed or some sort of, you know, watershed restoration project, I still think the Washtot project at the bottom of 228 is, Sahali Way is the, is the way to go, to me. How do we move that up if it is gonna be a transportation project, because that's a critical one? If there is gonna be a transportation package, I think that's a critical one to include in it, if we can. The third one, K4C, sure, something in there for that, but I think we need to keep it to three, that's my two cents, so that whoever goes in there to talk to them has literally, what, five, 10 minutes before the ADD kicks in, and they've got somebody else waiting to talk to them. So I think we need to try and keep it pretty straightforward. I think the issue with the Washtot project on 228 Sahali, to me, is relevant, because it does bring in traffic from the 5th LD down through the 45th LD, so it does kind of wrap in both, coming from Fall City, North Bend, Snoqualmie, Carnation, wrapping down into the 45th and Redmond. So I think that is, you know, a good chance to expand our reach in terms of who we're talking to, as far as state legislators are concerned. I just think we need to keep it short and quick, and keep our asks relatively specific. It's my own personal perspective that I don't think we're there yet on this. I don't think we should go into these things half-baked at 11 o'clock, whatever, 11:30 at night, trying to figure these out. I hope we can revisit this and get this back on the agenda with some specificity before, I don't know, at least before the end of the year, so that we can give our lobbyists the best chance to try to frontload these things, because decisions are being made as of November 4th, about what's gonna be in that next package, or that next set of agenda items coming up in the session. Thank you.
Okay, Mike just said this was coming back. I did want to say, one of the other fish passageways that I've got, I have concerns about is where that high school is going in, So Laughing Jacobs. And so that may be something we need to look at. I have some big concerns about that one. Okay, so is there anybody else? I think, Mike, you've got a lot to look at and a lot of information from Luke before it all comes back. Okay, Luke, thank you very much for staying up late.
It's my pleasure. Two final comments, and I know you're, you've been, it is, it is late. In terms of transit, it's much harder to get and harder to sustain asking for operating dollars on transit. So I talked with Mike, and he couldn't think of a capital-related project, and obviously, if you're marching orders or to go try to get service dollars, that's what Nick and I shall do. But just wanted you to be aware that that's, that's hard, because the state doesn't like to make continuing commitments, operating dollars for a transit. They much prefer giving money for a capital, a project where they know it's a set amount of money. And the second thing, in terms of time, I think it would be, it would be ideal if the priorities were adopted by Thanksgiving-ish, because we, in recent years, we've had a meeting with the local delegation in December, and we'll probably have to be virtual meeting this year, where we go through the city priorities with them. And I think that's very valuable, to have that conversation a month before session. So I wanted to mention that as well, prior to your deliberations.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are up to our last topic, guys, and we've got 10 minutes left, so I think we can do this. So the last thing left is the emergency management zone coordinators, and that is Mr. Sugg.
Yes, I'll try and keep this quick. This topic was requested by the deputy mayor, because the PIC will be taking action during their next meeting, so council input is needed tonight. The question the PIC will be taking a position on is whether the emergency management zone coordinators should remain independent contractors or become employees of the King County Office of Emergency Management. Currently, there are two zone coordinators who assist cities in meeting their emergency management responsibilities. Their contracts are managed by the county, but the coordinators do not work for the county in May. The King County Office of Emergency Management decided to allow the contracts to expire and advertise those positions as internal county staff. Following feedback from concerned cities and members of the Emergency Management Advisory Committee, or EMAC, the contracts were extended through the end of this year. The SCA representatives on the EMAC met recently, and their consensus was to recommend that the zone coordinators remain contract positions to preserve their independent advocacy role. Andrew Stevens is here, if there are any questions about the role of the zone coordinators in Simamish originally. Again, the question on which the mayor needs feedback tonight is whether the zone coordinators should remain independent or become county employees. And with that, I will turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, so I am gonna turn this, I'm gonna turn it over to, well, who should, who wants this? Would, deputy mayor or Andrew? Deputy mayor?
Sure. I think I can go quickly on this. I think I have a quick solution, I don't know.
Yeah, I think when we talked about it, the agenda meeting, I think everybody's probably on the same page. If somebody, Karen, I don't know how you want to deal with it, but I think most of the cities at PIC have expressed concern about moving these emergency coordinators and moving them to the county. And so I think, and the board, the SCA board, we have already written a letter stating so, but PIC has not taken a formal position and plans to, so it would, in all likelihood, be in support of what the board had already passed.
Okay, so why don't we just get a motion out there?
Wait, can I just, can I just say one thing? So Christie, isn't it true that at PIC, when there's an issue, because this doesn't directly impact us, because we have an emergency manager? So isn't it typically the position of SCA cities to be supportive of the cities, when there's an issue that impacts other cities, that we would just support what the majority of those cities go with? So I don't, I don't know that we, I don't know that we need to take a formal position other than to advise you to say that if the majority of the cities that are impacted by this, the majority of the cities that don't have emergency managers, take a position, then as a good SCA partner, we should support them in whatever position that is.
Yeah, I just need to.
That would be my recommendation.
A motion will take care of that very quickly, so I can take our position forward.
So I would make a motion that we direct the deputy mayor to support what a majority of the SCA cities who are impacted by this support.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
I make an amendment that we support not having him appointed, or not having him brought in by the county.
Yeah, we need a specific position.
We, we should take a position based on what the majority of the cities who are impacted by this decide at the PIC meeting.
Well, it's already been verbalized at the PIC meeting, the last meeting, they've verbalized, they do not want the county to have these, right? They want their, their, the zone coordinators to stay in place. So we know that already, so if we're supporting what they want, then our position would be to have the zone coordinators remain as they are, not be moved to the county.
Well, then why not just go with the same, the motion? Because what if something new comes up at the PIC meeting, and, and that they change their mind? I think we should stay with what we took up to do.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second Karen's motion.
Well, there was.
I'll second the motion, and I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment on the floor was that, what was my amendment?
We can't have an amendment until we have a motion already.
He seconded the motion, so then she made an amendment, and he seconded the amendment. So we're there.
So there you go. Yes, so the amendment was that they remain separate from the county, and independent contractors.
Right. Did we have a second on that? Second?
Yeah, yay.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So the amendment is a six-one. Okay. Okay, the original motion, as amended. All those in favor of the original motion as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Hold on, there's.
Hold on. Christie?
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
She's got a report.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to highlight one thing that's not in my council report, which is, I had a dialogue over email with our city manager and the city attorney relative to the RBOs and Airbnbs in our city, to see if we can find a viable option relative to the nuisance property. Just wanted to bring that up and speed on that, that was all.
Can we just get an email on that and bring it up?
I don't think they, they can throw you onto the email when they respond to me. I don't think they've come to a resolution on it yet.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't think there's a, opposed, opposed. Okay, everybody, you guys, get some sleep and have a good week.